Good evening Nottingham. We will start the meeting for Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand and four. We will start it with the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start any public business, what we're going to do is we are going to swear in two members to the Nottingham Board of Select, Matt Sherlin and John Decker. I will read the opening statement. They will read their statements below to be sworn in. For both you guys, where is there is a member vacancy on the Board of Select? Well, we're gonna do it individually, never mind. All right, Matt. I state your name.
I, Matt Sherlin.
Do solemnly swear that I will fulfill and impartially discharge, if performed. Sorry to go too fast. I haven't done this before.
Little chunks.
I have this, so start again, my apologies, my first time. I.
I, Matt Sherlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent.
On me as a member.
On me as a member.
Of the Board of Selectmen.
As a member of the Board of Selectmen.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules.
Agreeable to the rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
Laws and rules.
Laws and rules.
Of the State of New Hampshire.
Of the State of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Read the sticker. I.
I, John Decker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent.
All the duties incumbent.
On me as a member.
On me as a member.
Of the Board of Selectmen. According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution. Laws and rules of the State of New Hampshire.
Laws and rules of the State of New Hampshire.
So help me God. All right, little different from normal procedure before we go on. We will do the electing of officers. And then we'll go back and approve minutes and the manifest since we'll need you guys to make sure we get that voted. So first of all, who wants to be the chair? Or who wants to nominate somebody to be chair?
Make a motion to nominate John Moore to be Chair of the Nottingham Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Motion and second.
Roll call.
Sure.
I, John Decker.
I, Steve Welch.
I, Matt Sherlin.
Thank you guys. Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion for Tim Daubrio to. I talked to him, he said he would take it if so desired.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to make, Tim Daubrio, Vice Chair of the Nottingham Board of Selects. Roll call.
I, John Decker.
I, Steve Welch.
I, John Moore.
I, Matt Sherlin.
There we go. As we sit here, we're gonna first go to next item would be assigning Boards and Committees. Normally, that's what we do every year. So, Tim Daubrio, I'll make a motion, who wanted to be on Budget Committee, switching from his CIP. I'll make a motion to appoint Tim as the Board of Select Budget Committee Member.
Second that.
We have a second roll call.
I, John Decker.
I, Steve Welch.
I, John Moore.
I, Matt Sherlin.
Planning Board.
Are you okay with another round?
Me?
Yeah. Or do you wanna be the Chair and then fill in as?
Well, I believe as the Chair, I should be the one that when anybody can't make a meeting, I should be the one filling in for that meeting.
Correct.
So if you can't make CIP or if somebody can't make budget, I think it's the, it should always be the Chair's responsibility to act as that filler for all those, all those positions. Again, that's just my take. Unless you guys have a difference of opinion on it, think otherwise.
I mean, that's a perfect scenario, but obviously can't always happen.
My only thought on that is the Planning Board is pretty shaken up this year. In terms, and you've, you're probably gonna be one of the most tenured people for Planning Board. But if you would like to.
I'll do it, doesn't, I'll be happy to do it. So, and again, you're right, there's, there's a lot of new members, so. But we all need experience down the road, guys, so.
Yeah, we can start like rotating in if you wanna be.
Well, I think it'd be something too would be for, for just some of the meetings, you know. You know, if it's not a big caseload or stuff that's already been discussed, that somebody should be actually starting to fill in.
What day do they meet on?
Wednesdays at seven.
They meet on Wednesdays?
Yeah, two Wednesdays a month. But it's something for people to get experience. It would be nice, it would be nice to see people stepping up to volunteer for these other boards, just so that we can, just gives you guys a better, well-rounded, you know, when coming to speak and about things or when things come in front of us with a little bit of experience. But if somebody wants to nominate, I'll, I'll do the Planning Board. Do we have to nominate each other if we just go, I'll do Planning Board? I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna do Planning Board.
I, Steve Welch.
I'm the Planning Board Rep. I don't think we need to vote, we're all pretty much. CIP. Tim was on that last year.
I'll, I'll do that, I've done it a long time ago.
Now, we did have a Marston's, but that's gonna be somewhat coming to an end since the the field's done, thing's constructed, dugouts are put in. I mean, with that same person, I think would be the, whoever is gonna be the rep is for the
Rec Department.
Rec Department, should be able to cover that.
That was my feeling. Should roll into the rec.
I don't think there'll be enough information coming to warrant a.
Well, that's what I'm, that's basically what I'm getting at, it's not like there's new stuff that going on, I mean, they're basically finishing most.
Yep.
Everything that's there, so it should be up and running, actually. I thought the spring, but.
Yep.
So we also this year, you know, and this is assigned Board Reps to different Committees and Departments for the town. Tim was with the Recycling Center last year. Did anybody wanna take that or do you guys wanna stay with the same Committees that we are on and we'll just assign? John, well, it's up to you, I'm gonna get them up.
I don't care which one I do.
Well, Ben was.
Highway.
Assigned to the Highway Department.
I mean, if you wanna mix it up, that's fine too, so it doesn't matter.
We're open for discussion, this is what we're here right now to do. If you have an opinion, this is when we gotta speak and say it, so. If you wanna stay the same way, this, we can stay it the same way. John, come on now.
It wasn't until late summer, I mean, we can either continue that for a bit longer if you want, or we can rotate it around now. Depending on.
Again, I don't, again, either way doesn't matter to me, if we could stay with what we're doing for now and if we feel like for scheduling purposes or something that needs to change, we can always change it. This is not a set in stone.
Sure. I'm fine right now. I'm still assigned to Fire.
I'm still with Rec.
Tim Daubrio would be.
Recycling Center.
I was Police, but I'm Rec.
So you'll be Highway.
I'm doing Highway.
Well, I'll be, I'll be now taking probably some of that Marston from what I find out from Courtney.
I do the same now.
Correct.
And that's you.
Correct. Cause the construction of Marston is pretty, is over and done with, so. It's the same.
Same, okay, thank you.
No worries. Did everybody get to look at the manifest and payroll?
Did. Make a motion to approve the const payable three eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four and payroll of three nineteen, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and we have a second, a roll call.
I'm gonna abstain because I don't even know what I'm looking at at this point.
There.
I, Steve Welch.
I, John Moore.
I, Matt Sherlin.
They'll be in the red folder to like review and sign later and they're usually in the office, but they come out in an email, which yours is just coming up this week, so.
And any questions you have, just reach out to Ellen or you can reach out to Betsy.
I don't, for the minutes, I don't think we can do non-public, cause we're not gonna have a quorum, he wasn't there, he wasn't there, so we gotta wait till Tim's back for the non-public and we just cut him. So.
The regular Matt, you got two of you that can.
So we'll have to wait for the minutes for public and non-public for three, four.
So Ellen, please make a note that we are postponing, approving our minutes due to the fact that we don't have a quorum of Selectmen that were at the meeting. So tough to approve that way. Okay, we're gonna move into now the Town Administrator's Report. Excuse me, guys, if I'm a little bit, just being the first meeting that I'm actually the Chair. Taking things a little slow, just to make sure that everybody gets dotted and done. So.
First thing that I wanna start on that was not included in your packets, the Household Hazardous Waste Collection that was scheduled last fall, we were double booked, so it didn't take place, they've rescheduled it and there will not be a second one this fall, so the only Household Hazardous Waste Collection will take place on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. It's from eight to noon. And it's at the Safety Complex in Raymond, which is off Industrial Drive off Old Manchester Road. So this notice has been posted to the website and we're gonna have it posted everywhere that we possibly can to get the word out, because again, it is the one and only for two thousand and twenty-four. Moving into my report. With Lorraine Anderson being reappointed as the, or reelected as a Town Clerk, rather, she would like to continue to maintain Alana Kenny as her Deputy Town Clerk. So that requires a motion to approve the appointment.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Alana Kennedy, Alana Kenny as a Deputy Town Clerk.
Second, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, roll call.
I, John Decker.
I, Steve Welch.
I, John Moore.
I, Matt Sherlin.
The Conservation Commission, there are three members that are up for reappointment. Sam Demerit, Susan Mooney and Mary Culver. Request a motion to approve the reappointment of those members.
Make a motion to approve the reappointment of Sam Demerit, Sue Mooney and Mary Culver to the Conservation Committee.
I'll second.
Is that like a three-year appointment? How's that work?
I believe it's one year.
One-year appointment. Because you said that they were up for reappointment, is it only just them or?
Yes.
Yeah, and on, on the things you'll see when you, it's from March of two thousand and twenty-four to March of two thousand and twenty-five. So we have a motion. I did the second. Roll call.
I, John Decker.
I, Steve Welch.
I, John Moore.
I, Matt Sherlin.
We received a special event application from Kubota Trust for their annual water cross events. They're being held in June, August and September of this year. All applicable departments have reviewed and provided their feedback. There is a copy of the license, the draft license that I've included in your packets. The requirements are, proof of insurance must be received fourteen days prior to each event. License application fee for each event is paid fourteen days prior to the event happening, we've already received the payment for the first one. Police detail coverage for two officers arranged to the satisfaction of the Chief fourteen days prior to the event. EMS coverage required privately contracted and arranged in advance by the applicant. Fire department shall conduct a walkthrough on Friday prior to each event. Campfires are not pre-approved, but will be considered the day of the event depending on fire conditions and because there is no longer a hogger and peddler license, that was repealed by the State last fall. It would just be a proof of valid State of New Hampshire mobile food unit license for each vendor to be provided to the town prior to each event. So according to your special events licensing policy, events with expected attendance of more than a hundred persons, which they're anticipating upwards of fifteen hundred, that I will provide the Select Board with the application materials, the staff recommendations for discussion at the next available meeting. You are welcome to call the applicants in to discuss directly with the Select Board if you have any concerns. It does not appear that there are any changes from the events that have been held in the past. So the question is, is do you wanna move forward with authorizing me to sign the special event license or do you want to call them in for the Select Board? For any questions or concerns?
Has there been any problems in the past? Not that I'm aware of.
There have been concerns from the abutters or people that are impacted.
That was before it, I mean, that's. My only concern is this started out as a smaller water, and again, you guys are around for this, a smaller water cross event. You know, now it's on to three times a year. Now it's on to, we don't have a say on how many vendors they can actually put in there. So they could have small Deerfield Fair going, which might attract even more people, which might even attract more police presence needed. So I do think a meeting with Kubota Trust might be in the best interest of this Board before going on and moving forward since, you know, I mean, with the State.
Set some parameters.
Yeah, and with the State basically saying, you know, now there's no more peddler license, that we don't have a say on, you know, who's going in or not. I mean, that basically it can open up to, and we know it's not a, you know, it's not a family party where somebody's coming with a food truck to feed fifty people.
Right.
You know, this is.
It's a money-making function.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's three times a year. So.
It is one day, right?
No, it's two days.
It's a two-day.
So they do their practices on Fridays and then the events take place from ten to six on Saturday and Sunday.
And practice hours are, I think, from six to seven, six to eight or something like that on Friday nights. So it is three weekends.
Yeah, three whole weekends with Fridays.
So again, input please, I mean, that's my thought process is that on something like this, you know, that we, instead of letting it go and go, we should be more proactive on being on top of anything that could be changing, instead of having it changed and us going back and trying to do something.
I mean, it would be prudent to have them in.
I don't think it. This is, we're not open for open public right now, this is just our general conversation. If you wanna comment at the end, you can on this subject. I mean, at the end of the meeting, if you wanna come up and bring up, if it, if, we're gonna do little things, we're gonna do. At the end of the meeting, we'll be having public comment, just like we always do. Public comment, it will be, is beneficial if it addresses the subject that we talked about tonight. You know, stuff that we're all aware of, instead of just open questions that we're not aware of. So as we go through, again, when we have the meeting with Kubota Trust for those problems, that would be a great time with the public to wanna speak up about problems so that the applicant who's actually in front of us can be
Address them.
Addressed to the problems and more aware of the things. I'm just, that's how I think the best course of action to handle that.
Do they have to have an application for each weekend event?
In the past, it's come in with one application with all the dates of the events listed out. And that's how I came in for this year as well. There's a copy of the actual application there in the folder.
It seems like it would almost be one, like each, again, it's one person, but it almost seems like you would need at least one sheet for each one. Just thinking, cause each one's like a separate event, right? Takes place, there's rally it up and then that makes sure like if something happens, going further down.
Again, these, that's very valid point and from my time when this was coming in front for us, you know, for their event planning was one of their reasons was to have them all three done. This is that they could plan the whole summer and they didn't wanna have it as individual times to come in front of us. Because for some reason, if we changed our mind, that would throw off their whole schedule. But that again, is up for discussion when they come through.
Maybe three permits discussed at one time, but I think just.
But they have three different ones and not one permit for three events, is that what you're?
Yeah, it just seems like that might be the way the intent of the thing is, we can kinda keep track of those events. And we might wanna see too, any, if our, Brentwood does the grass drags, which might be a similar style event.
Well, that's, that event is huge.
Right, it's in Fremont and I think this is a precursor.
I'm just wondering, I wanna make sure like, is there something that they have in place that helps restrict the size, you know what I mean, like are our procedures behind what they're trying to do? So if we look, if you're, if it's in Fremont, I think you're right, it's right there at the border. Maybe just see what their town has put in place so that we're, like you said, well, it's grown to three, well, what's helping us control that or how many vendors or something like that?
So before we schedule our meeting with them, I mean, obviously, when we have our meeting with them, that information we should have.
Yeah.
So all of us doing our own due diligence, should probably be looking that up to kinda to see what the general rules are if there's a way we could maybe contact somebody from Fremont to see what they.
Yeah, cause that's, that is through NHSA.
Yeah, but still it's in the town, so this is gonna have some sort of.
Right, it's like an event at town, though, like, I mean, I'm sure it's the same, it's at the same location as like the Renaissance Fair, so it's like the same.
Yeah, but they might have it zoned for that, too, for that whole area, it's set up for that stuff, so.
How many events did they have last year?
Three.
Okay, so it hasn't gone up in number, that's, I thought it was three last year.
But the first event they ever had might have drawn four hundred, five hundred people, then it got a little bigger than.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things at events too is which you have to be, which is out of everybody's control is what the weather is. If it's a nice eighty-degree sunny day or something like this, that's probably gonna double the crowds would be than if it was a rainy.
Do they have a rain day? Again, question.
No, we never gave them an alternative date. It's that date and that's it.
Right, they probably can't have a rain date because it has to meet whatever schedule that they're trying to.
I think their schedule's kind of open, but.
I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure.
No, I'm just saying, we can have that discussion when they're here, you know. Those are good questions that we should be asking the applicant for such an event.
So I will schedule them for the April first meeting?
Sure.
Yes.
All right. I have in your packets drafted up the lease agreement with Emmys Porta Potties for the year as discussed at the last meeting. The only other change that was incorporated into that document is found under Article Four Utilities. We added in the statement that the leasing shall be billed for any proportional heating oil costs associated with their use of the building during the fall and winter months.
And just for people, if they're questioning on that too, this is a good shout out for Emma's Porta Potties. They volunteered to pay for the oil for the building for their heating purposes so not to burden the town with that fee. So I'd like to thank them very much for stepping up, you know, and doing that for the town and covering the cost. Emma's Porta Potty. EMI. So that was really nice of them to be, to offer that. So instead of the town and the taxpayers having to pay and that we can actually use a little bit more of the profit off renting it, it's not a lot, but something. So thank you very much to them for that.
Correct.
Correct.
So this agreement is for the term of one year as discussed, so it would commence at the date of the expiration of their existing agreement, which is May sixth of this year and will extend through May sixth of two thousand and twenty-five. If you're okay with this, if you could just authorize me to execute this agreement with Emma's Porta Potties or if you would like to.
Anybody have a question or concern they'd like to address?
I don't see any problem, there was no problem last year, right?
No, it worked very well.
Yeah.
I think it's good that we have some income, so.
Yeah.
No, and it's nice, it's a local business too that's benefiting from it, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to, off as administrator, to execute a one-year lease agreement with Emma's Emmys Porta Potties. That'll be for one year from May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four to May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
We have a motion in a second, roll call, vote.
I, John Decker.
I, Steve Welch.
I, John Moore.
I, Matt Sherlin.
And then I've also created a lease agreement for Clarence Bodett, who was the second party that was interested in renting a bay over at the old fire station as well. Actually, like a bay and a half, we have to reserve a half bay for the rec van to be stored during the winter months. So that is in draft form, I would like to be able to get that off to him so he can make sure that it fits the needs as well.
And then if he agrees upon it, we'll come back and vote on it?
Correct. Clarence Bodett. Clarence Bodett.
So this one, you're not looking to start yet?
No, I have it, I have it drafted up to start April first, I really have to check with him to see when he's looking. I think he's ready at any point, but I just want him to have the opportunity to look over the agreement before.
Nothing? You don't need any motion on that now?
I don't think so, I think we can probably hold over until the next meeting.
Sure, good.
I'm just trying to clean up some of the old housekeeping. The NFRD bylaws that were amended in January, they've been through legal review. We got the comments back on those. I would say probably closer to the end of January, but I don't have in the minutes anywhere that we officially approved them. So I'm requesting a motion to approve those as amended. The NFRD, the Fire and Rescue Department.
They were as approved by the department. Yeah, they, they initiated it, they developed them, they proposed them, did everything per the, per the bylaws and then they voted on them. they voted on them. Now it's sent to us, and now, how it's written in here, then it gets voted on by us, and then back to them.
Do you want to make a motion?
All right, I make a motion to approve the revised NFRD bylaws, and, yeah, just approve the bylaws as they were amended.
Did you want a moment to read over them?
Uh, I haven't, are they even in here?
Should be at the back of the packet.
This side, oh, here they are. This one, I haven't read them. Can we hold it over? So they, they all approved, they approved them themselves?
Correct.
So, I mean, I don't, I mean, it's just a basically a rubber stamp for us to, unless there's something in here.
Yeah, I'm asking you, because we all had the privilege of reading it before you, so, so I want to make sure that you're.
That's why I'm trying to ask some questions.
When it came through, um, I mean, they approved their bylaws, I mean, they're, they'll still probably be in, not a lot of departments have bylaws remaining, most have moved to standard operating procedures and guidelines, but part of it was just cleaning up any conflict between here and the town, or saying, like, you know, refer to the personnel policy of the town for certain aspects in here.
And I could always abstain, so, that's fine, if I haven't really.
Correct, yeah, I don't even have the original copy for you to see. This doesn't, this is as written, so it doesn't have what you can see.
So do we wait for a couple weeks, let them review it? While it's needed?
Or do they need these, I mean, they may need them right away, right? And if you guys are good with it, then.
I just want you to be comfortable with what, I mean, you're here, so, I don't want you to be.
I, I, I don't know what the old one said. I haven't really had a chance to read these. If you guys have done your homework and you guys are gonna approve it, I can abstain, and it's, that's fine, because it's gonna pass anyway.
Works for me.
So there was a motion made to approve the bylaws.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, a second. Roll call.
Uh, John Decker abstain.
Steve Welch. Aye.
John Moore, aye.
Matt Sherrill, aye.
Uh, do you want to hear Mr. Bassett, and I can continue after?
Oh, we're already there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're gonna start this meeting at seven.
Yeah, so, we will now postpone, uh, postpone the town administrator's report to go on to our seven o'clock appointment, uh, which is Mr. Kevin Bassett.
Kevin Bassett, one oh one, two o'clock.
Is he at our request?
Is that this one?
It's on the, um, the legal guidance that we were reviewing at the last meeting. We agreed to bring him back in.
Do, I mean, I, I know it about it, so. Do you have any, do you want me to just go on?
Um.
Want to bring John up?
Yeah, it might be helpful.
Okay, so, uh,
his property is located off Dolph Dam Road. Um, I forgot the new name of the road that we renamed it already. Channel, there you go. Figure that out, channel.
In part?
Uh, Mr. Bassett, um, was fortunate enough to buy a large sum of land, which the town road now goes through the set of land. Uh, but due to the fact of when the roads were approved, uh, there wasn't a set of, it was just as they were. But in future planning for Kevin, he would like to know what, what you, what that meant. So, after lengthy time, uh, and I thank you very much, Kevin, for your patience. You know, appreciate it. Uh, under the attorney's judgment, that's in under what we have, that the twenty-five feet for the road should be the standard, which is what I believe you are asking for? So for your surveyor to survey the road? Using that as the guidance of what the road and what the town is responsible for? Question?
As a function of an easement?
Uh, that's what, yeah, um, you have that in front of you.
That would be typical.
For laying it out. So Mr. Bassett has petitioned the town to lay out the road and set the width. In order to do so, we need, under RSA two thirty-one, we need to define what we would like the road laid out at, which you've just stated twenty-five feet, and then we have to have the required public hearings as a result. Public hearing, I believe. So I believe once we have the road surveyed, or the set of plans available to go off of, then we can schedule a public hearing.
Do you have any questions, Kevin?
No.
Or was that your only question?
Well, just for fact, the, the road survey is near completion, and so it's ready to be, you know, viewed.
Well, could, that's gonna speed things along.
At the twenty-five feet. Yes, sir.
It's a, it's a road survey as is, so there is no easement applied to the survey at this time. I believe that would be applied in a planning board subdivision exercise sometime in the future. That's my understanding.
When you go to, if, if you go to subdivide all the properties, yeah. Right, because right now, it's still just one parcel.
It's, yeah, it's just one parcel. Questions, um?
Kevin, can you show them on this map, what we're looking at? They're probably better equipped to show them.
So, Route one fifty-six.
Yep.
Split, dam.
Yep, dam.
And this is my channel road.
Okay.
With the old lamprey. The lamprey is now, my, my, my simple definition, a circle. With Indian, and I am.
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah, right.
All right, so then what, so what are you trying to do, I guess?
Well, in order to, um, subdivide, my parting gift to my kids is son, daughter, and daughter. I needed to know where the road was.
Yep.
Go to a road survey. This is depicting twenty-five feet, it's not on the, the list.
And you go from the split all the way up through?
Yeah, actually, out here.
Okay.
Where my property starts, so it goes all the way behind the dam.
So it's part of it here.
Yeah. And this side.
Yep.
This is what we've made. So, um, so there is a subdivision, essentially, son, daughter, daughter, in the future. But I had to know where the roads are.
Right.
And, and now I'll ask a couple questions. We did ask five questions, uh, I did have clarify, and one was, the name of your yard down in front of here. This is an old subdivision plot, but it only encompasses, you know, roughly this. So, ownership of the road and such was asked. Was any of those questions addressed?
Not in that legal correspondence.
Nope, maybe this one here.
I believe what they found, in a quick review, none of the roads were laid out in the original subdivision plans.
They weren't. So that was one thing that was mentioned in here, because the roads weren't originally laid out, there is no record, and the town never, in all the years of the road there, never kept a record of measuring how wide it was, they just graded what was there and kept the road going to where it was. And when the subdivision did happen back in the sixties or whatever it was, right, they only subdivided all the lots that were on the, on the water, and nothing going in made it, it was just how you got there. Uh, obviously, obviously, the planning board wasn't, uh, exactly, to, to.
Swipman did, but.
What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? You know, it's, uh, sixty years ago, so I guess we can move on from that. So from going forward, what it would be perceived from my views of here is that, you know, during our, um, what we have for roads is that twenty-five feet is like the minimum, so standard for what we have, so that's where your road is gonna be considered twenty-five feet.
Hopefully that helps you in the future.
Well, hopefully it does, but when we have the public hearing about your road, we will take the, uh, the temperature of the room to see what, how that is.
Understood.
Um, and then when you go to subdivide, obviously, the standard of the road being laid out, which you'll need, then you'll have to go in front of the planning board.
Oh, certainly.
Because you're gonna make separate lots.
Ready subdivision.
Right.
Of course.
But again.
But you're gonna need my survey to, for your public.
Exactly.
So Kevin, so the proposed is the green that basically infuts all the properties?
I think that's his property.
There are portions that, that I, that I think you're pointing at, is where the original road was laid out, but that's not where the existing road is.
Right, right, no, so, but there's green dashed lines. Is that the proposed area? Got a key up here, no? So it says Lamprey driveway out, and it's like all the edge of the.
Yeah, that's the original nineteen sixty-five layout.
Okay.
But it's obviously, this road exists and that does not.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, it's like, so what, what are you trying to get surveyed to, to the road?
The road as is.
As is, so no.
As the warrant article describes.
But only on your property?
Well, according.
Naturally, which doesn't include this. So, right, so.
It does include this.
Right, so your property.
Includes this, includes this, includes this, includes this.
Right, so your property includes up to these.
That is correct.
So these are your two? So the original, that's a single part of that single lot. Okay, so, you have like these little sections of property that, it's a driveway or something?
Yep. Yep, that, in the future, if you were right, that ought to be in it either.
Right.
To that person, if not yet.
Right. Right, and that's why I didn't know if you were gonna try and move it back to the green.
No.
Okay.
But that's one of the questions of the fives that I've submitted, and I'm not sure if you ever get the answer, but.
And who knows if these, these are, like, passable?
Right.
Yeah.
In the most case, if they're not.
Right.
They were never passable.
Mm-hmm, which is why the road ended up where it did.
The road ended up where it is.
No, all right, thanks, Kevin.
Are those five questions?
Yep, I have them pulled up right here.
He's looking at the. Yep.
These same five questions?
Hmm, this is the, um.
Okay, so, that document that you have, will that be?
Did you want to see that?
To me?
This is the attorney's, uh, questions to his, his five questions.
John, will that be supplied to me?
The legal document.
Do we have to vote until that's?
Yeah, you do have to vote to make it part of the public record, but I think there's something else in there that isn't subject to disclosure, so we might have to get her to summarize a public response. All right, I think it's the last paragraph.
Not to make light, but at least we know the twenty-five feet.
That's what I offered. I'm glad that it is concurrent.
Where does this belong?
Oh, in this file right here.
That's, that was just a bigger version.
I think there's just a paragraph in that response that needs to be redacted in order to release it.
Okay.
But I can verify that with the attorney.
Yep.
If you want to release, if you can.
I don't mind.
Most likely, Kevin, it will fall under probably an easement, you know, that you being the owner, but then the town having the right to go over it. Same as an easement, probably similar to what you're gonna see for a power company that's lying, that's running through the yard, they have their thirty feet. You know, you can't build and do anything on it, but it's still yours or whatever, so.
Yeah, the.
Because we, we, we don't, the town just, in my opinion, does not want to own more property. That's not what we're here for, so, you keep it.
Yeah.
So in general, the five questions, there are a couple of road ownership questions. There is an easement question, which, which I'm trying to glean if, if you have enough information to answer that, or, or it'll be forthcoming. Road width, which is what we just talked about, and then the confirmation on, on, um, road naming, you know, how far does Indian Run go, and specifically, so.
Okay.
So, in general, do you think those are addressed?
Yeah, and she just didn't write in, what I read, she didn't write in the actual easement part, but that's, I presume.
I think we have to get clarification on the easement, and then the road confirmation will come from when it was renamed for the nine one one.
Yeah, because she mentioned that too.
Exactly how they've got it laid out for the lengths, so we should be able to answer that one. I don't think it's included in that response, but I have it written down, so we can make sure those get answered.
But I don't think that those will be in any way a burden to you, or, you know, inhibiting what we're trying to accomplish here, for what you want to do.
If the answers to, to two or three of these would just help to confirm the survey is, is, is correct, that's all.
Yeah, the big one, where it was from the last one, was the twenty-five feet. That was the, the prudent question.
That one, and then the length, so they can mark where the end of, like, Indian Run and stuff is, so they can.
Yeah.
He'll have all the dotted line, he'll just have to say that this section's Indian Run, this is channel.
Yeah.
Going down.
So if it was specific, is that, as the survey shows Indian Run, is that correct? That's basically number five.
And that's what she'll take.
So.
What nine, what nine oh one took.
Let's get to the latest surveys, and then you, then you have something to respond to, or with, and then you can go forward with your public hearings.
Guess I'm not following part of where Indian Run is listed, oh, you mean from the old one to where it is now?
No, no, it's depicted on this new survey.
Right.
Right, and the question is, is that accurate? And that's relative to the emergency lanes.
Correct.
It's been declared here, here, and the survey says it's.
It's all listed as channel, it's all listed as channel, I think.
Right, that's, okay, now I got you, I got you, sorry, I was just, I'm just used to always being called that, that's, was Indian Run, this was over here, this was over here. I didn't see how they, they remarked it, but, okay, I got, I know what you're saying. That's a simple procedural fix.
I bet you'd like a copy of the survey.
Yeah.
As soon as it's done.
Sure, and then we can schedule the hearing.
And you won't have to pay me back.
And then you can come see us for another reason, for some time down the road. Uh, is there any more questions on this? So we know we're gonna proceed here first, is we're gonna do the survey of the twenty-five feet from Mr. Bassett. from Mr. Bassett. Will needs to know about the, uh, just identifying the roads of where they are, which is Indian Run, you know, Lamprey Drive. So that's, goes along with his map. We already know about twenty-five feet. And then we're gonna have a public hearing, um, discussing RSA two thirty-one, um, for public comment. And then we should be, and then also to make just note of the, uh, whether the road will have an easement for the town over.
And two thirty-one is, is what?
There's a whole lot of subsections, but-
It just says RSA two thirty-one, Kevin. The book's a stick and there's a lot in there, so I didn't-
It has to do with laying out the road.
Okay. All good?
Before we excuse Mr. Bassett, is there any questions you guys have for him?
I think we've asked plenty of questions in the past.
Again, you got, I'm just going over.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. And we will continue back with the administrator's, uh, report.
Okay, uh, just for point of clarification, I did look up the Conservation Commission appointments and those are three-year terms.
Uh, then we have listed here as one year.
I know, so I'll have to, they haven't taken, they haven't taken their oaths.
Okay.
So, we can-
So it is three years and there's just the three people?
Yeah, it looks like, um-
They're all done at the same time?
No, it's staggered terms. So Sam, Sam Demerit, Susan Mooney, and Mary Culverd all expired in two thousand twenty-four. And then, um, we have one member that expires in two thousand twenty-five and two that expire in two thousand twenty-six, and then there's a few alternates.
Yeah, I thought there were more than three people.
So three, two, one. Um, so I will get that corrected before the official oaths are signed. Uh, moving forward, um, I've given you a snapshot of your meeting schedule, which is set up based on the, the prior board's schedule, which was the first and third Monday of each month, with the exceptions being when a mon, a holiday falls on that Monday. Um, you've been scheduling them for the Tuesday of that week, so you could just take a look and see if you wanna make any adjustments. I know you talked about perhaps changing the time, so if that's something that you would like to change now would be the time. Or is some time better than the present?
I was just opening it up as a conversation. I mean, everybody's good at six to them. You know?
I, I don't have to drive to work most of the days, so. Not like you.
We're not changing the rules for one person, so it doesn't, doesn't make any sense. I'm just saying though, if, if other people felt discomforted and they wanted to change it to seven, I was, this is the time we need to do it. That's why I kinda threw it out there just to see. Cause you know, in all the years past, we've never addressed it and I always kinda questioned why. I, I bet it did sometime.
At one point, they used to be at seven, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
You know, I'm just, the only reason I bring it to is for the fact of, you know, cause every other board, every, I think, we have in town, well, not every, I'll just take that back. All the boards, um, that we, you know, deal with here are seven o'clock, I mean, is when they go, for seven. So that's why I just didn't know why for six-thirty was brought up, but-
Somebody thought it was a good idea at some point.
I don't have a strong opinion.
I like six-thirty.
Sure. Do you wanna stay on the first and third or two weeks or, cause it was two weeks for a while.
It was every two weeks, so we moved it to the first and third for the convenience of one member last year.
I'd rather go the other way.
No, there might have been multiple members. Um, so the only thing that this creates with an issue during the first and third is the, the months that we have a five-week month. Sometimes you have an extended lapse between the meetings.
Yeah, I'd go back to the way we had it before and not do the first and third, in my opinion.
Every two weeks?
Every two weeks.
But does that screw up like monthly stuff or whatever, or?
No. I don't see it to be able to.
I just got a prior commitment on the second Monday of the month.
So let's stick to first and third. If we need to have an extra meeting.
Every, every month you have a
Second meeting. Right, so that's gonna be a problem.
But, that's good information, Steve. Thank you.
A problem.
But helps.
It, it kinda goes the other way, so like if we stick on the every two weeks rolling from here, I have a rotating schedule. And then this lines up, two weeks lines up good when we do it the first and third, that's why sometimes I'm not here, cause I'm on second shift. So, gonna miss one or the other.
Yeah, and I can miss one of my meetings. So I'm flexible.
The Tuesday's gonna be a problem for me.
Well, guys, I, I, I don't know where to go.
I'm good, I'm good between the week.
I'm available, so.
Mondays are good.
Well, we're, yeah, we're-
Right.
The only time we moved to a Tuesday was for the holidays.
I know.
Yeah.
That was Labor Day.
That's Labor Day.
So keep as is for now?
What have you decided?
We can do every second week, I can-
Every two weeks.
Does that fit your schedule?
It does. Like rotating forward, but like I said, it just doesn't conflict with the weeks that I'm on second shift. If we go two weeks from here, but then that changes what you're looking at quite a bit.
Yeah, so April will be unaffected. It'll just be moved from May moving forward.
Okay, so April will be unaffected.
Twenty-second, yeah.
I'm flexible.
It'll add an, it'll add an April meeting, I believe.
Is there one here and there that I'm gonna have to miss? Maybe?
So, right, so if it adds an April meeting, then the May meeting will be the second week of May.
Yeah. Everything else will shift.
Which I know that that day is gonna be, that specific day is a problem for me, but that's just a whole different thing.
Either way.
In my opinion, over the course of the year, we have twenty-five, twenty-seven meetings, right, whatever. You know, as a member of this board and signing up to be this board, you should, I mean, there's acceptable times, things that you miss from, you know, because of engagement you have. But it shouldn't be affecting, you know?
Right, the whole thing. Yeah, exactly.
This, you signed up, so
Yep.
Make it work for as much as we can, you know? So stick with what we're doing right now, the first and, and the third. We're sticking with six-thirty.
Okay.
Good.
We're all good?
Yep.
Okay, so we're sticking to the schedule.
So basically, we're sticking to the same schedule. We, we had discussion about it, so I feel good, we're good.
It's a problem for Matt.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is extremely lengthy. Um, Chief Woodman is our Emergency Management Director, is starting the process of updating the town's local emergency operations plan. It was last updated in two thousand sixteen. Um, this is going to follow the update of the town's Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is nearing completion. We have a tentative meeting scheduled March twenty-seventh to look at the new Hazard Mitigation Plan and then hopefully be able to present it to you for approval beyond that point. So once that process is wrapped up, we'll be working on that as the next project. Um, as a reminder, New Hampshire DOT is holding their public hearing on the red-listed bridge replacement, one fifty-two over North River. Um, it's this Thursday, March twenty-first, six P M. at the Nottingham School, so anybody that is going to be, everybody's gonna be affected by the road closure. March twenty-first, Thursday, six P M., Nottingham School.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Will be held in the, didn't say where it's gonna be.
Um, it doesn't say, it just says Nottingham School. I assume it's in the gym?
With the cafeteria.
They, they requested a special police-
If you go there, you'll find out where it is, I'm sure, so.
Um, as an update, the, the well at the recycling center, it was able to be repaired. So, they repaired it, replaced the tank, the pump, and put in some pre-filter because we have extremely sediment-filled water up there, so it obviously bogs down the system quite a bit, but. And it's all been replumbed, so we were able to make that all happen for eighty-six hundred dollars. I think the cheapest well replacement that we were looking at was between thirteen and fifteen thousand, and then we still had to replace the pump and potentially lines into the building, so, um, it was an effective attempt, which we're thankful for. Um, at this point, I did try to put a claim into Primex, but pretty much anything water-related, plumbing, piping under the ground, they don't touch, so. I'm still waiting to hear back from the claims handler who called Friday just for an update to see where we were at on it, so I, you know, I'm not gonna give up hope, but I'm not going to default hope either, that there might be some insurance proceeds coming out of this. Um, so with that being said, I have an eighty-six hundred dollar repair bill coming in for that. We're gonna have to figure out whether that comes out of um, the building maintenance funds, or if you want that to come out of ARPA funds. Um, I know we're gonna have to start doing creative methods with a default budget in place.
When they did all this work, is this going to be a fix that's going to be, um, fixed for ten, fifteen, twenty years? So it's something that we should not be addressing?
Correct.
So we aren't Band-Aid in this, we are actually fixing it.
Because of an accident that occurred.
Even another one, we, but so-
So this was because of an accident?
Yes, um, the there was a well tile that was surrounding where the casing came up out of the ground. And it was assumed to be rubble and it got hit and then it broke the casing and then it filled in the well casing.
Which is why it potentially could be an insurance claim, okay?
Correct.
If that makes sense. I was gonna say why is, right? All right, nope, that makes sense.
Um-
Well, it was good we could repair it, so.
Yes.
And I just say that because in years past, things have gotten fixed, but they didn't get fixed. They got fixed to a point just to make sure that they were workable.
Right.
And due to the, you know, the public response on the warrant articles, you could see that, you know, fixing things and the money that the town wanted to set aside for fixing things properly, instead of just trying to Band-Aid it, was something that was addressed by the outpouring of, of support for those warrant articles. So I'm happy that, again, it's a fix that'll be taken care of, it's something we won't be addressing, you know, for many, many, many years.
I think those pumps are like warranty for like ten years, maybe?
Right, it's unfortunate we had to spend the money for it, but-
It's not a submersible pump down in the well casing, it's actually inside the building.
Show a well.
Yeah, thank you. And that had burnt out when this all happened because it pumped so much sediment through it and it just, it burnt it out, so. Um, we were able to do a quick repair on it and it lasted for a little while and then it just completely died. It was also underrated. I think it was only a half-power, half horsepower pump. So I think what it's been replaced with is at least a horse or three-quarter. Um-
Did we put any barricades around it or whatever?
Right now, there is, there's, we're gonna put Jersey barriers around it, so it's visible of what it is, but then also no, so.
Cause we definitely need to protect that.
Um, last Thursday, I had a mobile shredding service come out. Um, we are starting the clean-out of the old OPEC in the community center. We had, um, boxes and boxes, I would say probably forty to fifty boxes of old ballots that no longer need to be kept, um, because they according to the retention schedule, were bound by RSA thirty-three A. Um, so there was just a lot of stuff that was out there and there was old title applications, stuff that could have been potentially, um, at risk for privacy evasion, so I played it safe and decided to have a mobile shredding company come in and get rid of the documents, just so that they just didn't end up in the dumpster or in the wrong hands, so. Um, they came out and they took care of six bins, and when I say bins, I think each bin takes care of like a legal-sized file storage box full of documents, so those were all shredded. And, um, we also had a twenty-yard container put in two weeks ago, so they're gonna start, um, Alan, Trenton, and crew are going to start cleaning out some of the old debris, everything else, um, you know, the insulation that's fallen down, start some of the, the demolition and clean out of OPEC. And then in reference to the complaint policy that's come up in-
Do they have insurance, their own insurance for that, or is, uh, they're gonna be covered all by ours? If something happens when they're in that, that building-
If we subcontract him to do things, then yes, he has his own insurance.
Is that what we're doing? For some? If he's bringing on other people?
No, we're pretty much relying on volunteers at this point.
Okay, but that's, I'm just asking a general question.
Okay.
Cause it is a mess back there.
Mm-hmm.
So it's something where it's, you know, it's not a regular working environment.
Right. I, I know that he has, um, he is working on pulling together quotes. I mean, we're eventually gonna need an electrician in there to clean out. So maybe he's pulled together professionals to do that end of it, but as far as, you know, just-
Just the hands on, throwing stuff. Again, I'm just asking that, I just wanna be
Good question.
Clear for the people, you know, we know what's really going on.
So, in response to the, the complaint policy that's come up in public comment over the past couple of meetings, I had located a policy that was in place from the Board of Selectmen in two thousand eight, so I went through the meeting minutes to see if that policy had been updated and found that it was actually repealed in October of two thousand sixteen, and this was around the time that the Board of Selectmen rules and procedures were put in place. Um, I'm not sure if that was the reason behind why it was replaced, or if it said in the minutes that, um, they were either found to be outdated or unneeded policies and ordinances. So that was one of the ones that had been repealed, so. Um, my research concludes that there is not a formal complaint policy in place. I don't know that it's necessary. Um, if you want to put something in place, I mean, I think if we just put some guidance out there, whether it be on the website or have forms available that somebody can fill out a written complaint or send an email just requiring their contact information for follow-up, and I also don't think that we should be necessarily handling anonymous complaints. So, uh, that's, that's up to you. If that's a policy that you want me to work on, then I'm happy to. But, other than that-
We've been handling complaints, right? So this would just be, if we, we have formal process in place so that we make sure escalation or whatever, moving forward. And then at that, back of that could have the form of which is required, and then we can also put in what we, you know, what we're dealing with. Potentially dealing with for like anonymous or, or whatever, so I believe we believe some policy should be in place or continue handling it.
Or just a procedure.
Handling it. Oh, procedure.
An internal procedure. I, I mean, it's, as far as I'm concerned, if a complaint comes in, it needs, there needs to be a repository for that complaint to come, and then it needs to be handed to the applicable department for them to deal with, and then there has to be some type of follow-up. So I, I'm thinking that this is more of like an internal practice, but since it is coming up in discussion a lot more, if you want to put a policy in place, now is the time to start working on one, or what is your pleasure?
I think a procedure is a way to start. And if we need to make a policy out of it, you know, depending on how that procedure is, that we could do that, but we probably need at least a procedure.
Well, it should be fairly simple.
Right.
We're not bending the wheel. I mean-
Yeah, it should be pretty straightforward.
If you have a problem with a coworker, you go to the things. If you have a problem with the, the person in charge, then you'd go up to the next line, which would be Ellen. If you have a problem with Ellen, the next people in line would be us.
Right.
And it's personnel-related, so, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be personnel-related, it could be a complaint about a road, so.
Well, again, that, but-
Or the recycling center, or-
I mean, complaints about the roads, that's just come in and sit down and complain about the roads.
Or, or bring them to hell.
Or bring up, write it-
Or they could bring them to any of us, really, but.
I mean, that's kinda what, that's kinda what the intent of, I always thought, was the the moments we gave at the end of the meeting for public comment would be considered a complaint department comment.
It could be.
Not that I wanna, but I mean, that's, you wanna do it in an open, public forum, that this is your, your, your time and to do it.
Yep.
You know?
Hopefully they're giving us kudos instead of complaints.
We'll get there on that, but, so. Uh, but you know, that's where I felt like it was best, I mean, having a form, I don't think-
I think it's just a general, if it's, somebody had an issue with the way a highway truck was driving down the road, she calls, it at least gives us a way to track either the person who did it, make sure that, and if it's highway. Steve responds back to, like, we should give a response to people and not be like, I don't- Steve responds back to, like, we should give a response to people and not be like, I don't know. I think that's all the form would do is just track that we've got them and then that that either can go into a personnel file or it can go into just some sort of thing that we can track and see.
So what's the form we're gonna top say, Town of Nottingham complaint?
That's kinda what they say.
Pretty much, cause it's gonna be so vague, there's no, we're not putting any consensus on what it is. It's just, it's just a general, open form of whatever you wanna complain about, it's, it's there and put it in writing. Is that what you're, I mean, I mean, I don't think that's a terrible idea, but it's kinda just vague.
It is kind of.
Hopefully we don't get inundated that we have four more boxes full of back of complaints or how long we have to keep them or just address them and get rid of them, but.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be, again, in the thing we can determine if we wanna keep it or if it just be dealt with or.
Can we call them comments?
Well, actually, yes, I've been, well, we get to define technical details, Skip. I'll definitely put that one in there for that. Um. Just look at all of me, man.
Yeah.
I'm the one speaking. If you've got something else to say, say something, you know?
You're sitting in the middle.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, I think we've heard like some people say, oh, I had an issue and I, I mentioned it, but I never heard anything back or whatever. And this would maybe just be the way that if somebody says something, it at least is tracking.
Generic complaint form?
We, we do have a generic complaint form.
Right.
Yeah.
So just fill that out.
And otherwise, if there's an email sent, then normally what would happen is it would go to the department head handling that and then it's up to them. So that, that was part of the question is, you know, where's the follow-through? What if that department head doesn't follow through, then, you know, it's just, it's dead at that point.
But at least this way, if we file that generic form.
File the generic form, create a log.
Right.
And that way we know where it was and where it ended. So if that person doesn't hear back and follows through and says, what's the status of this complaint that I made, then we can at least go back and somewhat track it.
Yep. That makes sense to me.
I'll work on a procedure. Get something posted online. Some updates from the rec. Uh, Legacy Lunch fifty-five plus on Wednesday, three twenty. Uh, student leadership group at the school will be hosting this month's lunch. The library will also be hosting their coffee hour prior to the lunch, starting at ten AM. During that time, the rec will lead the group in writing limericks in the spirit of Saint Patrick's Day. Uh, come on down for great food and company all over fifty-five are welcome. The event is free. Registration's now open for the youth egg hunt on three twenty-three. You've been egg three twenty-two events. Uh, Girl Scouts will be onsite selling breakfast. There will be crafts at activities set up in the gym and the egg hunts start at ten AM. The community cleanup day is scheduled for April thirteenth. Sites will be cleaned up, including Foss Fields, Marston Fields, Community Center, and the library. And the rec is also gathering people and supplies to help with field maintenance, spreading wood chips, installing the new play structure and more. For those interested, please sign up, um, with Bridget and the rec department. And registration's also open for the first ever kickoff to summer five K and one K. All programs and event information's on the website. Courtney has also provided us with a memo to purchase new gym mats for martial arts and wrestling programs with the rec revolving money. Um, she has obtained three quotes and recommends, uh, Dulamar, Dulamar sport surfaces for thirteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars. This would require approval. And the timing right now is perfect before we get the gym floor redone. So if you wanna take a moment to review those quotes and perhaps offer your approval for expenditure from rec revolving funds.
Hopefully they don't go to New Jersey. They all say Nottingham, New Jersey.
They do.
But it's got the right zip code, so they'd get it anyways, but.
The shipping thankfully says New Hampshire in the line item, so. They're at least, but you're right, the shipping address needs to be. Does this come with any type of different storage than what we're doing now?
For the gym.
Roll them up. Stick them in the corner. I just didn't know for maintaining, instead of like how they get dragged around and the edges get frayed and then we try to. And this will cover a larger area than currently? See, we got three. They got the wrestling.
And they were fine with six foot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, these quotes were provided by the instructors, so both instructors. That fits both their needs.
Okay. Unfortunately, I know too much about wrestling at this point, not enough. Grandson's big into wrestling, so.
You watch your television.
Oh my God. It's an all-day thing. Which is fine. So thoughts?
John still seems to be reading.
That's rec revolving.
Right. I'm good with it.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, this, this goes to supplying the groups that bring in quite a bit of money. And the other mats dealing with, um, karate and stuff like that are starting to, they wanna always stay kinda rolled up, if you will. So I think they are in need of it. This increases the size, it'll protect the floor, and now it'll add the, um, circles, so for the wrestling program, right now they're kinda winging it, if you will, but this gives them like league, league mats. They could probably even start hosting events here or something, I don't know.
How old are the other ones? They're probably.
You know, all.
Yeah.
They're all.
Like. From when this was the school.
Courtney, do you mind coming up to sit in here for one second since we're talking about thirteen thousand dollars and we're talking to come out of your money?
Um, I know that some of the mats were purchased when I got here, which was around nine years ago. Um, and there were mats that were there beforehand as well, so these mats get a, a long use life out of them. Um, they both take care of them extremely well. We don't let summer camp kids touch the mats, right? We only use them for the things that they're supposed to be used for. Um, I think Fawn uses it for trainings too.
Yes.
Yep.
Taser.
So, um, a big piece is wrestling started about three years ago. Wrestling has now gotten to the point where we have about thirty kids who participate. Um, so that program is year-round and so is martial arts, so. And he's starting a girls' wrestling summer program too, which is pretty exciting, so, yeah.
So do those, uh, clubs that are using it are the ones that are gonna be taking care of the mats?
Taking care of them?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, they clean them, they maintain them. They're used weekly.
This is just the floor, not the backstops, the wall?
Yep, this is just the floor mats. Um, we have some extra padding for the walls that are gonna be hung up soon, I'm hoping. Um, to fix inside on like the short sides of the walls. Um, but those we got at a very low cost used. Um, and I believe the mats that we currently have, we bought used as well. Um, another good point is that we can resell these mats to a program to offset the, the total cost too.
Are they any old mats?
The old mats, yeah. There's people who will use them at home or other rec departments that might want them or neighboring communities that might need them. We got, I mean, when we first got them, they were used in hand-me-downs as well, so. We've kept good care of them.
Should we keep any of it? I mean, this won't take the whole gym space, right?
It'll take a lot of it, yeah.
But is there's, I mean, should we keep any of the other stuff to like fill in some of those blank spaces or not or?
Um, I think at this point with storage and what we have going on in the gym, we don't really have room to keep the other mats. Um, these would just replace what we have. I think we have seven now and they're all different sizes. Um, these are just six, all different si, or all the same size, so they would take up less space than what we have now, which is good.
They're six by forty-eight.
Yeah.
And the money that is coming to pay for these are coming out of your rec revolving fund?
Yes.
And how much does?
Just wanna be clear for people outside that are.
Wrestling bring in?
I don't have that number with me tonight.
I mean, just like to.
Couple thousand dollars.
Say how, what's the return on investment for?
Martial arts brings in probably around twenty-six thousand. Um, but we pay out those instructors as well.
Right, so I'm just trying to figure out how long it would take to pay these off.
Yeah, I can get you those numbers. I don't have that tonight, but happy to get that.
Well, I don't have any questions.
I mean, I'm fine with it. I mean, it's front rec revolving now. It's just more of a question of do you need to change those fees?
Yep.
Soon we need to motion this, cause it's coming out of the rec revolving.
Because it's coming out of rec revolving and it's over the ten thousand dollar purchasing threshold.
Do you, you comfortable?
Yeah, I'm comfortable.
Okay, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you that quite a bit in these next couple of meetings, cause I wanna make sure that you.
Right, it's front revolving. I'm comfortable with it. It's, you know, I mean, basically Courtney will look at the fee structure to see if, you know, if that needs to change, but that's beyond us. For now, I mean, we probably need them, so we're gonna have a new floor, might protect it. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the mats for the floor. I don't know if I need thirteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
That's good. Sufficiency? Sufficiency. Sufficiency enough?
We have a motion in a second on the purchase of the mats for the gym floor. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Matt Schron. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My report is done.
So next we're gonna move to our assessing. Um, there was quite a bit, guys. I hope you all had a chance to review. I looked over them today. It'll be a little longer, but.
I didn't have a chance, no, sorry. Cause I had. I didn't, I don't have email yet.
Okay.
Coming soon.
Coming soon. Coming to email soon.
Uh, some were solar exat, uh, exceptions. That means if you're familiar with that, the solar exemption that we have now is that we are not, this is up to speed, we are not taxing anybody for value of putting solar panels on their house. Before you'd say, oh, look, you got solar panels, that's forty-five hundred dollars worth of accessories to your house. We are not doing that anymore.
Okay.
So people can fill out the form to get that written off and that's why the exemption is. Obviously in order to veterans tax credit is. Uh, we get a gravel tax levy from Quibode Trusts. That's their permit in order to pull gravel out. Very simple. I'm just, I'm speeding you with just, you know, then we have intent to cut. You know, you're gonna go cut so many trees. This is all assessing stuff, which if you're, you gotta pay the fee for that right there. So as we normally go through, we're gonna go through these individually, um, unless they were, normally how we do it, did we go individually? Unless there's like three that are all the same, then we'll just go call off the numbers and approve them at one call. But since they're pretty much all individual, we're gonna go one at a time tonight.
So I just had a quick question on the.
Sure.
So the gravel tax warrant, I see that the intent to excavate, is that the same document?
It, and so the gravel tax levy is the, um, the final report to close out the year, so the tax year starts April first, so it goes from April first to March thirty-first. So the levy is to close out, um, excavation processes that happen through the end of March, which they're probably already done. And then the intent is for excavation to take place after April first of twenty-four, moving into twenty-five.
Alright, but is it the same document?
It's the same, it's the same property. So what they've done is they're closing out the report
Okay.
for this year and they're filing an intent for.
I just didn't see two different documents in here, so that's what I was curious if that one document.
There is two documents.
There is two documents.
What am I missing?
Intent to excavate, I think, and then.
Oh, here it is. I, I'm sorry, it was stuck to the intent to cut wood. Never mind. Alright, I see it now.
You want the hard copy? Here's the two.
Oh, I'm good now. I see it.
So I'll make a motion to accept the intent to excavate map sixty-nine lot ten.
Second. I'll second that. We have a motion in a second?
Yeah, what does it mean to me?
Given permission to.
You're given permission, right.
Dig in their sand pit.
Sure.
Basically. Get some big sand.
Yep. Alright, aye, John Decker.
Thank you.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Matt Schron.
Next.
Alright, I can jump on that one. I make a motion to approve the gravel tax warrant for map six-nine lot ten.
Second.
Um, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
So what's different on this one?
That's what she was saying. The intent to excavate was the new permit.
Yeah, so this.
That's the new one. This gravel tax warrant was basically last year.
Closing out what they had excavated and then we sent a, um, a warrant. It gets charged at two cents per cubic yard excavated. So we figure out what the tax is for closing up the year, so this is ordering the tax collector to collect.
Alright, yep. Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Matt Schron. We don't set those rates. That's a state.
Yep, that's a state.
Rate thing. Alright, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the intent to cut wood or timber. That would be map three-nine lot thirteen dash eight.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Matt Schron. Continue?
Yep.
Uh, make a motion to approve the veterans tax credit for map four, lot four dash five.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Matt Schron. Okay, make a motion to approve the service connect total, the service connected total disability. What?
Tax credit.
Tax credit? For map fifty-four, lot eight dash F.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Matt Schron. And the last one will be the, uh, make a motion to approve the solar exemption for map one lot forty-seven.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Steve Walsh.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Matt Schron.
And going forward, guys, I think it'd be because the fact of, uh, some of our minutes being taken online, uh, that when we do these assessings, that it would be beneficial for us to have one person read, one person second, just to keep it so that it's
Okay.
You know, easier for.
Yep.
You know, I mean, if there's questions as we go through, you know, everybody can stop and ask the question about it before we approve it. But just to keep it more uniformed and easier for the recordings.
Yep.
Um, even though most times we don't have six, sometimes it's only two, but just on something like, on this, on something like particular like this. And again, that's just my opinion. I'm just throwing it out there as something if you guys wanted to do or not, that's.
They're mostly formalities unless there was.
Exactly. Exactly, but we should always have a moment to talk about whatever before saying something's gonna be done. Um, so we can review items from the last meeting, action items. Uh, where have we, I mean, bunch of different things. Want to, want to speak to any of them, Ellen?
Sure. Uh, we've already talked about the complaint policy, procedural stuff. Um, the safety policy is still under review by Primex. They are doing a thorough review. I actually had them host a training last Tuesday during the elections. We did a harassment discrimination uh, training. Primex came onsite and we got all the staff that wasn't working the election to attend that training and then um, we have an online version for those that weren't able to attend, but um, I spoke with Nicole Armigadian, who is our, um, risk handler for Primex and she said she's going through it. It's gonna take her a couple of weeks just to make sure. Um, what they do is they review the policy, make sure it's in compliance with the, um, Department of Labor standards for the Joint Law Safety Committee. So we'll have that hopefully for the April first meeting. As far as the smoky policy, we've already talked about that quite a bit. I did draft up a policy for your consideration. Um, I actually pirated it from another town that that's the way that we work in municipal world of don't reinvent the world, um, reinvent the wheel. So it just pretty much goes on to say in accordance with the indoor smoking act, which is RSA one fifty-five colon sixty-four, smoking and use of tobacco products is prohibited in all town buildings. Other enclosed spaces and vehicles, just to summarize, um, goes on to define what tobacco would include cigarettes, cigars, pipes, closed cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, et cetera, vape.
And this is for all municipality vehicles?
This is for all municipal properties and vehicles.
Well, that's what I, you said vehicles, that's what I make sure.
It was smoking on town properties, including street sidewalks, parks, during hours of employment with the town. Falling exception would be obviously if, um, a crew, like a town crew is working remotely off-site, then they would have a designated area out of sight and dispose of their cigarette butts.
Properly.
Properly. Um, as far as enforcement, that was one of the questions. So appropriate signage placed at all buildings, just notifying people that there's no smoking within twenty-five feet of a wa- a window or an entrance. So we'd have to obviously put those in place and then it would be worn on the staff of these town buildings to notify somebody if they're smoking that obviously it's against policy. If it's an employee doing it, then it would direct up through appropriate chain of command eventually to me to deal with through the progressive discipline policy. This is here for consideration. Um, as with any policy that you put in place, it would be something that you would review. I'd put it on as an agenda item for you to formally adopt at the next meeting.
Perfect.
And now this is for all, it says in addition, smoking, tobacco, or use prohibited on all town-owned property. So this is for employees, but also for?
The general public.
The general public.
Correct. So ballfields, parking lots, recycling center.
Do we have? Do, do, do this?
The school has their own.
I was gonna say they're kind of in charge of their own land, right? They're separate from us.
I feel bad if somebody was trying to smoke a cigarette in front of the school. I'm sure it'd be.
I agree.
I'm sure they'd probably try to be lynched by people if they did that.
I think it already says it anyway, because you enter drug use and dare and everything like that, so. So we would, we'll just wait and we'll discuss this next time on the first.
Yes.
So we would need to have.
I'll put it on as an agenda item for discussion at the first. And then you can either make amendments to or we can adopt it at that point.
We would need to have a smoking areas for?
Designated smoking areas are already referred to in the personnel policy, but we don't actually have a designated area. So that was part of, uh, the question that came up. So I mean, in this instance, it's not to be within twenty-five feet of any town building or on the property.
Right, so that's kind of like.
It's kind of redundant, right?
Because, huh? So it says on the property, but not twenty-five feet away, you know? So it's kind of.
Uh, yeah.
Well, the, the indoor smoking act specifies the twenty-five feet.
But then we're excluding all the town property.
Yes.
So, I mean, not that I care, but I think we might want to have designated smoking areas.
That was a con- that was a discussion we had in one of our meetings already. Whether people are gonna be allowed to smoke in their car or.
In their personal vehicle.
In their personal vehicles or on town property.
Right, right, but I mean, that's still on town property. And it's that's why I think you want to have, I mean, if people are at ball games, you know, so.
I mean, the intent too is like down here, of the fields, the kids playing. It's the same thing as if they're playing at the school, like we the intent is there shouldn't be anything down there for the employees.
Go across the street.
Well, let's, yeah, but that's, you know.
I know.
Do we need to clarify? This just says like posted. If the RSA says twenty-five feet, we should at least have it somewhere in here that it says twenty-five feet if we think that's appropriate.
Well, yeah, I mean, but right now it says not on any town property, so.
Correct.
So if it's.
Speak on this.
Who?
The chief, I think she had.
It's applicable to her. Come on up, chief.
Rely on the chairman.
Well, would be, because obviously I think that at some point somebody's gonna call the police and make it an issue. And it's not really that much of an issue. I think we're thinking too much about it. I'm on the Joint Loss Prevention Committee too. Courtney is as well. Um, we've worked a lot on a lot of the things that happen in town that are kind of archaic. Smoking is one of them. Um, I don't think that we need to overthink it. I don't think that we need to provide a smoking area for people. I think that's way overthinking it. Where would you put it? You're right, it's twenty-five feet, so that becomes the issue. Um, if there's a smoking complaint, like, like Ellen said, it would be handled just like anywhere you go, right? Oh, the person's smoking, they shouldn't smoke. Handling at that level. If clearly if somebody just continues to smoke around a building or near a building and you ask them to leave, because that's what inevitably what we would do, right, Ellen?
Correct.
So then you would call the police, right? Because they're not committing a smoking crime. What are they committing? They're commiting, they're now committing a criminal trespass crime. Does that make sense? Don't think we'd even have to go that far. Twenty twenty-four, a lot of people know, you can't smoke in public places. You don't have to offer them a place to smoke. That helps you at all. Does that make sense?
They can't smoke in their car, though.
Yeah, because it's not even, you can't tell, I mean, they shouldn't. They shouldn't be, but they can, they can do whatever they want in their car.
Wow.
It's their, it's their personal space. The law is very clear on like what I as a police officer can and can't do with somebody's vehicle or while they're in a vehicle. Does that make sense? Just like if you go to a grocery store, you go to the, the courthouse or a public building, people are smoking, smoking all day long in their cars. They just can't get out of their car and smoke on the property.
Alright, so basically, so basically you're saying if there's an employee here who needs to smoke, they go in their car and smoke.
I don't think that we need to tell them what they have to do. No, I'm, no, I'm, I'm being quite serious. You don't, we don't have to say like, oh, when you take your smoke break, you should smoke in your car. It doesn't have to be even said. There's just no smoking within twenty-five feet of the building. What you do in your car.
According to this, it just says not on any town property at all.
Then leave it at that.
So.
Let them figure it out. No, I mean, I'm being honest with you. It, you know, I don't think you have to specify or think you're gonna get jammed up for it. Other towns have been doing this for probably twenty years.
And actually this, as, as I was just going through and reading this, it doesn't state anything about the twenty-five feet within the policy because it would conflict the twenty, twenty or twenty-five feet, I think was discussed at the, the prior board meeting.
Okay.
People will figure it out. I don't think it'll be an issue, but it should be addressed.
So what if their windows are open?
Exactly, which is why they're not.
Right. So they probably shouldn't do it, but I don't think it'll be an issue. Don't get into the weeds. No, I'm be- I'm being serious because I know it's come up, like, people have already come up to me, so are you gonna arrest me if I'm smoking a cigarette? Well, I don't know. Are you refusing to leave an area where you shouldn't smoke? Just like you do at an airport or at a convenience store or at a mall? I mean, you can't smoke in public buildings or near them.
Yeah, but that's not what we're addressing it. We're addressing on all town property.
Right.
Right.
Agreed.
So we're, we're taking, we're taking a large.
Right.
Right.
You know, the guy standing over in the weight corner, the side of the thing, all by and lonesome, or, or female, we're not gonna judge you.
Right, whoever, whoever is smoking.
Whatever over there, we're telling that single person, the way person over there.
We're telling the general public that yes, it's common sense that you should not be smoking twenty-five feet around a public building.
Plain and simple.
So would you rather have it not be as Vegas saying all town properties and just keeping it within twenty-five feet of a town facility, whether it be a ball field or a building or the recycle center or the highway garage?
I think that that's breaking it, just all town properties. I mean, we're not the only town that has this. I don't, like you said, you got it from somebody else. It's, it's what it is.
Pretty commonplace.
So just.
Yeah, we don't know if they're correct or not. Sorry.
They haven't been challenged. I counted, I, I, I called six agencies when I was on, on the committee, six municipalities.
I don't know anybody that would complain or that would bitch.
I mean, again, it's, it's a public safety, I mean, we all understand, right? I, I don't mean to offend anybody, but smoking is a ha- it's a public safety hazard. It it causes cancer and everything else. So it's not socially acceptable and it's okay to have a policy on it. That's it.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing else we'd really, we can discuss it more if you want, next meeting. That's when we can approve it. Or amend it if you want to think on it for the next two weeks.
I'd pass it tonight, but we can wait.
It, it won't let you.
Yep.
It has to. We have to wait till next time anyway.
Till it's wait till next month and.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, next month for smoking. Uh, we already went through the rental agreement for him, it's for a party, so we're good with that. Uh, Town Beach.
Town Beach.
That's still the same thing. It's not open until Memorial Day, closes on Labor Day.
That is correct.
Are we having any more discussion that's really prudent on that?
Um, no, there was some feedback that Tim DeBrio had given in the email. Maintenance items that need to be addressed ASAP. Uh, fix the gate that goes over the earthen dam. I think the state may have removed it when they were doing maintenance on the dam. Um, no trespassing sign on the larger dam wa- dam as well on the town beach side. Whether or not that's the town's responsibility or the state is in question.
It should be the state.
Yep. And, um, and then of course there's question about the access road to the beach, um, private property out of season. So obviously the town does not maintain it. And there's been a question about liability. Should people continue to I guess you would say trespass outside of the permitted time that we're allowed to access that road? You know, who, who does that fall on? So that's a question that I've raised to Primex.
I don't see it. It says no trespassing and the road says only open from this date to this date and somebody walks on it. I don't see why it's our responsibility that they, they're breaking the law. They're they're trespassing on their own free will.
I can say from experience, Primex is probably going to be looking for us to put some type of an agreement in writing because we don't have one right now. And I know that's one of the things that has come up, so.
In writing, okay, but they'll specify what they think the writing should be?
Well, I mean, we can propose a document to them and they'll review it through legal and look at it from an insurance perspective.
What proposed language are we gonna say? Don't go on it from this date to this date? You're not allowed to travel on it from this date to this date.
Agreement, um, that allows us to be able to use the access road during the prescribed period of Memorial Day to Labor Day. And outside of that, holding the town or the property owner harmless of any liability claims that may result. Et cetera, et cetera. Fill in the blanks. But as of right now, we're operating off a handshake agreement, so. I will wait until Primex comes back, but I assume that's probably what they're gonna be looking for in order to determine whether or not they would cover the town in the event claim should arise.
If a claim arises during the time, said certain time.
Right.
Would have said landowners when to prove. Guess we'll have to deal with that hurdle when that comes, if that happens, but.
We do.
I guess we have to pitch something. Right?
Yeah, no.
We could put together something.
Well, we have to put, we have to present it with something. We can't just not present it with anything, say, hey, this.
As, you know, could be as previously agreed, you know, just.
But we don't even know what previously agreed was.
We have.
So we might have to go with a whole new agreement.
We have ideas of.
And there might be different terms.
Right.
Access to the beach between the state and that date.
Yep.
Yeah, they might have to say that, you know, that if anything does happen, the town will cover, be covered under the town insurance and stuff like this. And it takes it, you know, we never had any of that written before, any of that. Just kind of.
Right.
But in this day and age.
I'll set your own risk.
Yeah, that's why people assume it calls for hot coffee, but whatever. I.
So wait till we hear from Primex and deal with it at that point.
Yep, and I'll reach out to the state and see about the other postings and the gate issue at the dam.
Are we not able to grade that road?
We don't do any maintenance to that road because it's private property.
I get it, but I think that would have to be part of that agreement probably. You know, or get permission to grade it. Probably needs to be graded, probably hasn't. The only people that are using it is our townspeople.
Well, we tried.
Now we're making it even bigger.
I know, I'm just saying it, it only seems.
Well, it's something.
I mean, it's a, it's a woodland's trail. Uh, it, it's passable by a all vehicles. I've seen Priuses up in there and everything else in between, so I don't unless it was a major something like a washout or something, we had to
Which we've already done.
Improve the road, I'm sure that's it's in our interest to provide the service to maintain it, if it's one little spot, but I think adding it to the grading list, it's not the intent of that road.
No, I wouldn't do it more than once.
Right now it's not, it's just.
I know.
It's a two, it's a two-track.
Just drone it out for conversation.
Well, do you guys want to schedule more? I mean, we can keep talking about it right now. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I'm just saying, while we're on the subject, or do you want to schedule a time to have a, a more formal discussion on this where we can prepare questions and for each other for?
Yeah, and then Tim might have some more backstory because he made, he had like a walkabout too.
Uh, and then have an idea of what we might be considering for a proposal?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's gonna be a key to where we go from here.
Yeah, it's gotta be more.
We could talk about a bunch of other things, but until we.
It's gotta be more documented.
Propose. There's no sense of having a conversation on it.
Yeah.
If we don't know what we're proposing. So it must keep that on the roof, action review in the, uh, because, you know, time is ticking. Memorial Day is coming, so.
Spring is tomorrow.
Yeah, first day of spring is tomorrow, so. And then we have the last on the road postings. Um, so from a conversation with Ellen and I, um, the highway department, I do, do believe feels that the frost is gone. Uh-huh, but I don't know if that's you know, the main reason for posting the roads is due to the frost and the, the melt, um, the creation of the, the mud. Uh, hopefully it'll dry us out. It has dropped, the roads have, for my traveling paths have seemed to dried out quite a bit.
Yeah.
Over these paths. So the question is tonight whether for this board, if we want to hold on for maybe a week or hold on till April first at our next meeting to decide whether we want to lift the twenty-six thousand, uh, pound uh, limit that we have now on the roads? Or are you guys comfortable at lifting it tonight?
I would like to wait. I would like to wait. I mean, I'm just looking at the quick ten day for Nottingham and there are several days through the weekend where the low will be in the twenty-two's or in the twenties and the highs will be back in the fifties. So that will potentially cause, I don't think waiting until the, we're having a pretty early spring, but most people I think are planned on not using the roads till about April anyway.
I'm fine with that. Do we know from the Highway Department what their recommendation was?
The recommendation was to lift the road postings.
But their recommendation was not.
The recommendation was us to not to post them.
So we wanna get them twice now, so.
Right.
Again, we're not talking, this is, I mean.
Right. I would personally lift all of the tad roads as of today. Yes, you can. No, it says any, not all. RSA says any.
They'd have to change all their postings, right? Cause they're.
Yeah, they just have to pull them off the, the tarred roads.
I'm just trying to think how it, I think they kind of blocked off from state roads in and they didn't do all the little roads in between.
Yeah, your main access point.
Right.
Right, so if there's dirt roads in between the paved roads.
But see then that, you know, we go onto the subject of theirs, you're going down, uh, ledge fire. Well, you're paved and you're hitting dirt and there's no way to get off it. So what do you do? I mean, you gotta turn around and go all the way back around.
So you leave the posting on that one.
Okay, well, I mean, let's not make it this difficult, whether.
But, but you leave the one on Church Street. How does somebody get from one fifty-two to one fifty-six?
They're all paved there. What do you mean?
Because that Church Street.
Posted, Church Street's posted.
When you turn out liars, it's posted.
Right, that's one particular street that goes from pavement to pavement. That's, I mean, again.
That's what I'm saying. So is that with the one you're saying, Paul? Well, I'm saying McCrellis Road, Smoke Street.
I mean, the intent was to try to.
I don't find it to be detrimental to hold it off for two more weeks to our next meeting. I don't think that we're gonna be affecting anybody at this course, cause mostly even the people that were planning on, if you were doing construction or any of this in past times, at this time of year was always been a posted time anyways.
So I did get a request and I'll just bring that up.
Okay.
To haul sand out of the Smoke Street pit. Back up to the square.
The Highway Director is reviewing requests on an individual basis and, and authorizing exceptions.
Took all through him.
So what do we?
Done.
Okay, yeah.
So if you need for some reason, you can request, uh, guidance from the Highway Department, uh, on whether you are allowed a certain time to pass?
Yeah, what he's doing is he's evaluating the temps and if it's going to be, you know, close to freezing conditions overnight, then he's allowing, um, like at six AM in the morning or when the ground really starts to warm up. That's what he's been doing.
So for what we're talking right now, you guys wanna keep the posting up?
Sure.
Till April first, till our next meeting?
I'm fine with that. I'm all voted.
You good too?
Till April first.
Okay, so we're sticking with it. Uh, so we're back on the, going back up to general business. Sorry. Uh, voting recap and budget review. So everybody here was voting on last Tuesday. Is anybody unaware of what, uh, the results were? I hope that you are. So I think from here where we're gonna go on is just a general quick conversation, uh, about the voting recap. We all know what was approved, but that doesn't seem to be our problem. Uh, our new upcoming issue is on what's not approved. Uh, that for one was our town budget, which at the increase of our default budget to our, uh, what was supposed to be a regular budget that we had was two hundred and ninety? Two eighty-nine, right? Thousand dollars, uh, which we don't have. So something that I think we should suggest is that, um, you know, it's gonna be a busy, whether we do a workshop or a meeting with, um, department heads to find out ways of making sure that their budget stays tight and if there's ways for them to cut or reduce, use that word maybe, it sounds better, uh, in order to meet the expectations of the voters. Uh, they did speak, so we should be as servants to them, doing our due diligence with our department heads and finding, you know, the proper avenues of with the least amount of. Uh, least, I don't know the proper word for that used in there, but, uh. The least way we're gonna affect the most amount of people by whatever we have to change or alter in order to meet what they voted for.
Replanning.
Does that sound better? But, um, so as we all did work on that budget, um, and John, you were there too, so. This I think is gonna be a more lengthy conversation.
Definitely.
But, uh, suggestions from you guys? I mean, I'm just pointing that out as a, a ruler for, you know, for us to start to navigate this. This is something that we cannot, uh, wait. If there's something that needs to be pushed from the April meeting in order to make sure this gets addressed right away, I think that would be a, uh, an avenue that we should address. And again, I'm speaking to you guys in terms, just throw out your opinion. That's what we're here for.
I would just like to point out that there's about thirty thousand dollars that were, um, part of the default budget figure from twenty twenty-three that were approved as separate warrant articles this year. That would be the social services and the, um, da-da-da-da. The Latinos program for five thousand. So, um, there's thirty thousand dollars contained within this default budget that has been approved elsewhere. So there's a starting point. Every penny counts.
That's right.
So that's just another reason why I think when we have that, um, why I think the meeting that we should have is appropriate is for information like that for us and for our department heads, so that we can kind of have a good idea of where we're gonna have to go with this.
Yeah, it's closer to forty, cause it's the twenty-four, three seventy-five of Article fifteen, the ten thousand for Article sixteen, which is invasive species, which I think was in there already.
That was a separate warrant article.
Right, no, it's just the five thousand.
Because you're adding to the expendable trust fund.
That's what it is, okay. Nevermind. And then Article seventeen to five thousand vote posted, okay.
So seventeen and fifteen were approved.
And since we're talking about this, just a public note, uh, thanking everybody that did run, um, you know, thank you for stepping up and putting your name and actually getting out there to run for a position. And thank you for everybody that actually worked the polls, um, and, you know, did that job that day. Uh, it was a long day. We didn't get, some of us didn't leave till eleven. So, you know, again, thank you for everybody that participates and everybody that came out and voted.
So we wanna set a workshop for working on this default budget?
Well, we can do, eh, I mean. Again, this is, this is uncharted territory, so I don't know. I can't, I can't give you some excellent direction because.
Uh, we're not allowed to vote on anything in a workshop, correct? It has to be at a meeting, or does a workshop count? You can vote on?
As long as it's a posted meeting, you can vote.
Okay.
I mean, do we do a workshop with?
You could do a work session for a specific purpose. You know, it can still be open to the public, but not necessarily opening for public comment or where you could.
And while it was voted down, it obviously was close. It wasn't like a hard, there were some of these that were a thousand, you know, a thousand to two hundred. It was a twenty-seven vote difference, so. It's, but it was, it's all who shows up. They did, it was voted down.
It doesn't matter the margin of victory or the margin of defeat. It is what it is, black and white, who won and who lost. So it's, we still have to go with what they, what the town voted on, so.
Now.
The question is, do we do a workshop? You guys wanna do a workshop with two departments and then do a second workshop with two more departments? Do you wanna try to schedule all departments to come in in intervals of forty-five minute intervals and we'll have like a three-hour meeting to go over this? I mean, what, what's the direction you guys, I mean, help me out here, cause.
What other things we have, like some, there's several options to us, right? There's stick with the default, there's the special meeting, which outlines if we find that, if we go through this default budget and then we have a gap between what is needed to either maintain services base, we might need require that. What else are we able to use, like the unassigned fund balance? What's, that wasn't.
Special meeting.
What's that?
Not without a special.
Not without a special meeting.
No matter what, it would be a special meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's, that's something that's.
This other process.
Resort.
Last, absolute last resort.
I agree.
And this other thing that was mentioned.
If you exercise, um, the special meeting under RSA forty, colon, thirteen, ten, um, that is going to require the two sessions. So you're going to have the budget, the budget presentation and then the voting session.
Is that like a full election one, or is that like the one where we got the, the school got the, um, funds and it was like in the cafeteria and it was more like a town meeting style?
I think it's still, because we're SB two, I think it's, it's, it's going to be one article that you're going to be voting on, so it's going to be less informal, but still go through the same process.
If it was using like the ballot machine and all the check-ins and the clerk and, but I guess we had to do that anyway for that. The adequacy funds, when that got approved, you had to check in, so you, you need to have the, there's a cost either way.
The only, normally you would have to petition Superior Court to hold a special meeting, but under this RSA, you're able to run a default budget.
We have to run on a default budget. That's, that's where we are. That is our budget.
Unless you go this alternative route, which means that you present another budget and put it back out to the voters to have them.
I gotta go for that.
And you can do that anytime. Doesn't have to be within X amount of days from the election.
I did print out the RSA, so let me refer back to that. I say I did.
I have it here, I just don't.
Yeah, I think I highlighted the part that actually applied. Yeah, I don't think, it tells the timeframe between the two sessions, but I don't think it specifies. Operating budget article is adopted, the local political subdivision either shall be deemed to have approved the default budget or the governing body may hold a special meeting pursuant to paragraph sixteen to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. And that doesn't state within a specific amount of time. But sooner than later. If that's the route that you're gonna go.
Well, the key would be to know if we aren't gonna make it, you know, like if the delta. Projecting based on.
That's what we need to know.
Correct.
So the work session would be.
Right, that's key.
Key to it, sit down, work it out, see where we think we're gonna be.
And then we'd have all the, so we have. Arpa funds left over.
We do have Arpa funds.
We have the.
The Arpa funds need to be committed by the end of this year and fully expended by two thousand twenty-six, so I believe we have a hundred and five thousand nine fifty-one, of which we had set aside, or we reserved the, um, conference room, move over to the community center out of those funds. We don't know what that amount is gonna be yet. We had preliminary figures. But in all actuality, I mean, like we need the town to function. That's more of a priority than shifting the rooms around.
And then this default budget went back to a higher road number, it's up to two hundred thousand, but then we had held over money as well from last year.
Right.
The one hundred and thirty-five thousand or whatever.
But I think what you have to do is even though the default budget was based on line item appropriations, I think what you're doing is you're looking at the bottom line, because obviously a lot of those figures have changed, just the increases in the police department salaries alone last year. The police department can't operate at present staffing levels on last year's budget that was proposed in this default, these default figures. So I think what we have to do is we have to look at the bottom line.
Correct, but I'm saying like if we already have, the hundred and seventy-five that we held over has to be earmarked for roadwork. So we could say, okay, we don't need two hundred thousand for, if that happens to be it, that gives us some money to.
But that hundred, that, the money that was encumbered.
Encumbered.
From two thousand twenty-three, those were project specific with the, the contractor. So it's not a matter of us just saying, okay, we've got this money, we can use that to go pave an apron or what have you. It has to be specifically reserved for that contracted project.
And then what other funds were there?
Um, we have the Arpa funds. We have, um, Senate Bill four oh one. We had a portion for, that can be used specifically for municipal roads and another portion for bridges. Um, you know, that's minimal. We ended up getting another, I think, we have forty-three thousand left in the roads and then I think we got another thirty-four thousand last fall, so that's eight-five-ish thousand. And then we have, um, some set aside, but that can only be used for bridges. So we don't have a need at this time for anything bridge-related expense-wise. Um, those funds don't lapse.
Bridges or culverts or just bridges?
Unless you can deem the culvert.
Right.
To necessitate a bridge. Um. And then we have, fortunately, we had the, um, addition to the building repair expendable trust fund that was approved by the voters. So if something should happen repair-wise for town buildings, we at least have some money to fall back on that. And that was a significant amount that was raised for this year, obviously with intended purpose to bring some of the buil- the buildings. Out of disrepair.
When do we wanna schedule a workshop or a work session? Who do you wanna call it?
Definitely need to give the department heads time to get through their stuff.
I think the sooner the better. I mean, they're all anxiously waiting.
Yeah.
Right now, we're all trying to. Keep things functioning without laps, but the quicker that we can come to a determination on where we're going, the better.
Do you have a recommendation?
I would say next week, at the latest.
Next Monday?
I would not be available next Monday or Tuesday as I'm coming off a night shift.
Do we wanna do a night or during the day? Do we wanna do it night or during the day? Night works better for me, but.
Night always works better, but you know, Thursday night's still available. You know, again, this is what we're here, this is what we were elected to do.
This Thursday, like in four days? Are you saying next Thursday?
I'm saying any Thursday. Whatever we have to do and as quick as we can get it addressed is what we have to do. It, the luxury of pushing it down the road for a week or two is not something that we don't have.
Right.
Correct.
So we're, we're addressing it and we're gonna do it. That's, this is priority number one. So however we have to, to get there, or what day it is, you know, whether we can, whoever, you know, if you can't afford to make the sacrifice to be there, understand because of work, I mean, your own personal family, before, I mean, that's what, that's not. But the four of us can get together, then.
It was available the rest of this week. Was it just gone today?
I think it was just today.
We got the public hearing this Thursday.
Yes, for the bridge replacement.
So maybe the fall next Thursday?
I'm available whatever day, so whatever it is, but again, the public hearing's at the school for the bridge.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you didn't go to the last meeting, the state's just gonna tell you what they wanna do and this is what they're gonna do, so. Good luck going to that meeting and hopefully you think you're having an opinion. If we need to meet in this and have this meeting here Thursday and it coincides with another meeting, so be it. It is what it is. I don't think we're gonna start rescheduling our budget around what are other meetings that are going on in town. That's not the way to address this issue. People will take their priority of what they feel they wanna be here and choose.
Yeah, you're right. It's not gonna matter, because it's gonna be, the state's just gonna.
It's gonna be like the meeting they had here. Again, I'm not, I mean, go to do it, not speaking for anybody, but.
I can't make next Thursday.
So let's look at this Thursday. Do we wanna make it a little earlier, six, six-thirty, like?
Once planning board meet, we can do it Wednesday.
Uh, planning board meets this Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Uh, actually, no, because we just met last Wednesday, we'd have the meeting, so we couldn't put our members on for your planning board review. We had a open conversation, but with no, no actual official meeting.
Sure.
Uh, we couldn't appoint the two members because of the seven-day waiting period from when you were elected, you know.
Whenever, yeah.
For, to make go over. So you know, no one actually saw that on the thing about having that meeting, because we probably should have had it this Wednesday, but that'll be the Wednesday after that, so this Wednesday's actually open.
Which is only two days away.
Again, we have to have twenty-four hours for our thing, so.
Twenty-four hours.
Well, yes, it is.
We just didn't have enough time to pull all that info together. Wednesday or Thursday?
And I made a short notice for the department heads, we'll get who we can here to participate in it, otherwise then.
Again, we're not guaranteeing we fix the problem in that night, but at least we start addressing the issue is where, where I wanna make sure that we go with it. And not, not something that we're waiting.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get everything.
No, I don't think so too, but that's why, again, that's why I believe, why we should be starting this ASAP and not later.
Yeah, I agree.
Wednesday?
Six-thirty Wednesday?
Six-thirty Wednesday, all of us, we'll just. Let him know. Tim, let him know. All right, good. Any more on that? No? Anybody wanna speak about anything else that was happening during voting day or?
Um, I did have a question come in from the property owners on Maple Ridge.
Oh, yeah, they got, they got voted down by seven votes or something like that?
So their, their question is whether or not the town is going to maintain the roads, which we're not, because it did not satisfy the town acceptance requirement. Um, they did wanna know, um, if we will be assuming it is an emergency lane.
No. That is something where that stat, statue has been used for many years in this town to bypass of make sure, you know, if a road or not, so I would not feel comfortable putting any, any road as classified as emergency lane. Uh, I mean, cause then that just, we might as well start plowing, because that's what we've done in precedent from all the years before. So I mean, it is up to the.
I, I think there was a road, wasn't it Strawberry Lane that failed and it had to come back to the town the following year?
It could, I, I don't recall all the votes of all the things that happened, I can't, but maybe, sure, it got me. I don't even know what year that was, so.
Yeah.
If you can pull together, Chief, do you have something to add to that?
Yes, I do. I mean, that did happen, our, our road, um, you know, the, the builder made it an HOA or something like, while they were building, of course, and so they took care of plowing. And then they had an agreement with, obviously, just like with the town, like the engineering gets done and then it gets approved, but you have to have twenty-five, you know, voters sign off on it, and then it got, it went to the warrant, and then, uh, nobody was there from the road to talk about it, so it got voted down.
That was in.
That was, that was it, yeah.
That was town meeting days.
That was town meeting, yeah, so it was during town meeting, remember, and I couldn't go out, but anyway, um, but yeah, so that's what happened. And so then, you know, this is an unfortunate situation, really, because.
This is a similar situation, they also have HOA documents and, um, they mentioned the road being transferred from the development over to the town, but not acknowledging the fact that there has to be a town acceptance as part of that process.
And that's actually, and that's a planning board or whatever, I mean, contractors do that, that's what they do. There definitely should be something specific.
Throw it up on the planning board, just go right ahead. Fine.
Um, but yeah, that did happen, and it's unfortunate, but they have to go again in front of the voters and, you know, hopefully it works.
That's the way we go with this town.
Right. It's unfortunate.
I think it should be changed.
That's the acceptance of roads is per the RSA.
Yeah.
Per, per that, like how the developments work, so it was kind of a, just a should have been just a standard task.
Right.
It's not really.
Right.
But we are proceeding with the way that it's been done.
Correct, no, we are.
That is what's happened, so.
Which is illegal, that, correct.
Comply with the law.
Yep.
So next year?
Right.
Find seven more people. Sorry that it happened, though.
Hopefully, with all voting, we find seven.
Well, right.
Is that where you're gonna relive the budget process?
Because if Fauzone is, he was the developer of the property, just say, whatever it is, he is responsible for it. So, but a good note was, that was brought up there, which is something to keep in the mind, uh, for anybody that's, uh, on the planning board watching right now, is a condition that, that's put in there. You know, as where we didn't have it in the last the provision. You know, about the vote and stuff like that, about the transferring it all over. At least that way the people on the road might have a better aware.
And the engineering firm has officially signed off on it, so.
Right. Oh, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful road, but.
It's unfortunate.
It's really unfortunate. Oh, look at that, guys, moving along. Uh, so going on the B O S rules of procedure and code of ethics. Alan?
I understand that this is a process that when the new board regroups after election, that this is something that you normally review together and make sure everybody's familiar with it, make any recommendations for changes, so I'm presenting it to you as your first night as a new board. Some of you are familiar, some are not.
Do we have to re-adopt it or not?
Uh, it doesn't.
It doesn't lapse, but.
An amendment to these rules of procedure may be moved at a board meeting, but shall not be voted upon until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Adoption amendment shall take effect immediately following a majority vote of the board at a regularly scheduled meeting. So here is your review period. If you feel that there may be amendments needing re-adoption, I can schedule that for the next meeting as a postage item.
I think we need to. I think the town needs to digest.
Shouldn't they be one, just, shouldn't it just be one document?
Have you got two in your packet?
Well, it's the code of conduct and the rules.
Well, one is the expectation of how
Right.
your members, and then the other one is the expectation of how the meeting's to be run.
I mean, it could be one document to me, but I'm just not saying it has to be.
Don't try to simplify things, John.
The, the part three of the rules of procedure responsibility of members does have a lot of overlap with the code of conduct, but.
Does anybody see anything in either of these here that stands out as a conflict to themselves? Uh, or feels like there needs to have discussion about changing? How we start there?
I didn't see anything.
No, I mean, I haven't looked at them in the past, just before I ran, but.
And at some point you could look and see if we couldn't combine the two. I don't think this is the time to do it.
Right, no, no, I agree.
More important things to deal with at this point.
Yes, yeah, like the budget.
Yeah.
Right, I didn't think there was anything unusual.
I think if you look it over, if you got something you think you should change, email Ellen and
Yep.
We'll make the amendment, we'll bring it up to the next meeting and move on. Personal opinion, my chair.
Yep, no, that's, that's what it says, so. We're about budget first. Yep.
What's next?
Good? We all good with that?
Yep. I think so. Can't stay too long, I'll fall asleep. Well, just keep moving.
That's only nine. It's not that late?
We got plenty of time.
Of course we do.
Well, it's not one o'clock, like.
Um, all right.
One meeting I attended.
To recap, Alan, we're gonna have a meeting on Wednesday?
Correct.
Wednesday, two days.
Two days. Wednesday, two days, yep.
Yep.
Uh, which will be Wednesday, March twentieth, for date purposes, um, and that meeting will be basically involved with our budget and reviewing. Uh, that will be the we won't have any other action items or anything else that'll be on that. That meeting will be basically just for budgetary purposes. Uh, for us to see where we are at, where we need to be and how we're gonna get there. Uh, and then hopefully, we probably won't get it wrapped up in one meeting, so there'll probably be another one. We already did a review of action items, kind of already know where we're going with those from our previous discussion, those will be noted. And is there anything left for the board, has any questions on? You know? We're gonna look to you, John.
Anything you got, John?
Oh, no, not that I'm aware of. Sorry.
Don't be afraid to speak up.
Yeah.
For, that we need to go over now?
No, I'm just, just seeing if you had any questions about the meeting tonight or anything like this that you wanna address? I mean, you're sitting up on the hot stage, so speak up, say something if you like it or.
I still got a lot I'm gonna do.
Okay.
I guess, that's.
There's your moment in the sunshine?
Yeah.
Uh, right now, we will take
I have to learn.
Uh, at the end of the meeting, we will take public comments. Now, we're gonna go forward a little differently on public comment now. And before anybody comes up, I just wanna make sure I address this on how we're gonna handle the situation. If you have questions for this board and it wasn't about articles or stuff that we discussed tonight, and you are bringing up questions regarding anything else, uh, too vague to, you know, start specifying certain things, we would prefer, and we are gonna ask you actually, to have those questions written in advance and, and, uh, sent to the administrator, so that we can address those in a timely manner. Instead of just coming up where we're not prepared to answer your questions, as much as I think I know a lot of stuff, and as much as I'm sure my colleagues up here think we know a lot of stuff, we cannot possibly know everything at the whim of a hat of, when somebody comes up to sit here to provide those answers. As much as we'd love to provide the straight answers for you that night, it's just not feasible in most cases. So going forward, if, for any of that, and again, we, if you want those, if you send us the minute, uh, your questions and stuff, and we can have them in a timely fashion where we can review them, you'll be more than welcome to be invited up at the end of the meeting for public comment about those questions. But just to come up and ask general questions that we might not know the answer to at the end of the meeting during public comment, it's not fair to us, it's not fair to the person coming up front, you know, for just getting answers. We're not here to, I mean, we're here to best serve you, the public, you know, but we need our time to research things as, you know, we all have jobs and we have everything else going on, so we just ask you to do that for us, and then we'll be happy to get back with what you're looking for, for answers. And again, if you get it to us in a timely manner before, you know, a couple of days, you know, our meetings are on Monday, if you can have that stuff in by Wednesday before that Monday meeting, we should have no problem addressing your, your questions at that next meeting. So for now, public comment could be anything on regarding whether you think your road needs to be repaired, or you think the dump's been running great or bad, or generally, it's public comment towards what you wanna say, and if you want people to hear your opinion on something that's going on in town. That's what public comment's for. So, anybody that wanna come up and say anything? Here it is.
I have a question.
Okay.
If, if I don't expect an answer tonight, is it the same thing to ask the questions tonight?
No.
Okay.
We want it set in an email form so that we can actually do the research and then we can actually have that emailed to us so that we can it'd be better service to you if we have a process of how we're gonna deal with people's questions, and I think in the past, we've, we've lacked that. And going forward, I don't wanna see us lack that, as we've done in the past with people coming up. Well.
Well, just, and if you did come up and ask a question, let's say, and then we, you know.
I, no.
We end up giving, I'm just saying, then you end up getting an answer, your answer will come like a day later to you and you might be satisfied, but all the people that are watching might not know what that answers, and then that question lingers for a period of time, so it's it's best benefit to.
It's fine.
Yeah.
So, and again, I, I feel that that's the best way, as for, since I will be here, that we can address and help people with that.
Your chair.
And you did say, you know, when you expect it by, like the Wednesday, that's.
Well, yeah, you can't send it to us on Friday night at eight o'clock and expect us to have an answer for you on Monday.
That was gonna be my question, but then you called it out.
Yeah, that's why, well, that's why I was addressing the Wednesday, to try to give people, since we don't have a, a good timeframe, to be considered for that.
Right.
I have a couple of things that were brought up this evening. I happened to look up, uh, we were talking about the members of the Conservation Commission. On the website, it says there's somebody whose term expired in twenty-two.
Probably does need to be.
And, uh, on talking about Channel Street, I happened to look up the Google map, and it's really quite crazy. Um, when we were, in the E nine eleven process, we were told that the maps with the various mapping agencies would be updated. Lamprey Drive is not called Channel Street here. It's not shown as a circle. Uh, a driveway is marked as Lamprey Drive, and there's a mystery road called Dolof Dam.
Is, I'm sorry, is that on Google Maps or is it on?
Google Maps.
Okay.
Right there.
Which is notorious for not being right.
Right.
So you could.
We can actually submit, that's what we've had to do. We've had several revisions and road names.
There's the mystery road.
Perfect, okay. Perfect, okay.
Anybody, anybody could submit those changes to Google.
I got a question, does Waze, well, if you put it in Waze, would those addresses appear the same as they did on Google?
Probably.
There's no physical address on that Indian Road, so they probably don't.
Well, then you can put anybody's physical address on there to see how it. Again, I don't. We do tell people, Doug, uh, just, you know, when they say their property, our property maps, that they're not 100% correct on where the lines are for the map, so don't use those as a judgment, but I get where you're going.
And there's no cul-de-sac in front of Steve's house. Doesn't somebody do donuts in front of Steve's house?
Don't drink, don't drink. He does.
Moving on.
Do I have a timeline?
Within reason, let's just say that.
Okay, yes.
It becomes repetitive and stuff, then we'll.
That's a yes, that's a yes, no question, okay. Uh, two things, one of them was addressed tonight, and I just want clarification, I just wanna make sure that the public heard it, 'cause there's sometimes audio problems, and the wing people are not in view of the camera here. And the topic I wanna bring up to is the complaint process. I'm the one that brought it up on February 20th, and I got an answer. I'm the one that brought it up again on March 4th, and I got an answer. And tonight, there has been a, another answer provided for the complaint process. And I just wanna make sure it's intrinsically clear, the town has not had a complaint process since 2016. Would somebody like to say yes and say, is that a true statement?
For a town person coming in complaining about their roads, is that what you're saying, or part of the personnel policy?
Or does the general, how to complain?
Complaint process procedure, period.
I am unfamiliar, so I.
Ma'am, would you like to get into the picture so people could see when you say it and read that again?
Sure.
Okay.
Hello, Ellen White, Town Administrator, for those who don't know. Um, in my minutes research, I found that in 2016, the complaint policy that had been adopted by the Board of Selectmen had been repealed, and the reason for that was there was a bunch of policies during that time that were either found to be not necessary, or were, the guidance was found in other policies, so they were redundant. So, I would say that as of, I think it was October of 2016, when that complaint policy was repealed, there has been no official policy in place.
On how to complain?
On how to complain, correct.
Or resolution, procedure on resolution, is that correct? I wanna, I wanna, I wanna understand this.
Well, I think that would be a resolution, 'cause I think that would be considered on a case-by-case basis.
Does the personnel policy cover?
The personnel policy does have a grievance procedure, but it is personnel-related, so it's not going to handle a complaint from the general public about a matter that's not personnel-related. So, the only other area that I identified and I shared with Mr. Vilchuk is, um, in your Board of Selectmen Rules of Procedure, there is a complaint process in there, but it still does not detail how the complaint be filed or a resolution.
But we have a mystery form.
That's a stretch.
Yes.
That's a stretch.
And I'm just saying, you know, in my, my research that I've done through the town policies, and that was the only area that I found where anything's defined about a complaint.
So there's no standardized process procedure since 2016 that the town uses for complaints?
With the exception of the town's personnel policies, which handles matters of.
With, within employees.
Correct.
Employees, okay. Final answer.
Final answer.
All right. Second thing, this is a, a topic that you should be familiar with, that came up again on February 20th. I don't know if you know the answer, there was a, a resident that asked a question about surety bond. Has, has anybody referenced or researched that and provided an answer?
Yep, there is, there is actually a state statute that mandates that anybody that is, um, handles the financial end for the town be bonded, so that would include our tax collector, our town clerk, deputy town clerk, and our treasurer and our bookkeeper.
I, I think it's a little broader, I don't mean to interrupt you here, it goes as far as trustees of the library.
Trustees of the trust funds, yes, so anybody with, um, funds handling, funds management. So, signers on the bank accounts.
I, I wouldn't expect to have this answer, so I just might be part of your new process, Mr. Chairman, but could we know specifically, could we, as taxpayers, know who specifically, what positions in town are bonded, are covered?
Yes.
Could we get that answer?
Yep, I can actually get a copy of the public officials bond that Primex renews annually for us, and it, and it details that information, so I will get a copy of that.
Specifically for Nottingham positions, I'm asking. Okay, all right. Thank you, that was quick.
Gene Reed, 345 states wrote. The Warren article, maybe I should do this email, you tell me. The Warren article for budgeting for, uh, revaluation was turned down, $20,000. How, do we have a contract in place?
Not yet.
So.
So we are, we are subject for revaluation once every five years, which 2025 is the year.
Yep.
That we're, so what we've been doing is we've been putting $20,000.
Yep, I know the whole background.
Just for everybody else, it doesn't.
Oh, okay, go.
Um, so what will happen is we will put out a request for proposals to complete that townwide evaluation this fall in anticipation of it taking place in 2025.
But we've been predicated on about $100,000?
Correct.
Based on avatar, or?
Yeah.
Based on past revaluations.
So, would that be a budget discussion on how, how that's gonna be paid for?
Yeah, again, that's.
That's next year's budget.
Yeah, well.
I mean, we have to find a way to pay for it somehow, I mean, how we're gonna do it, I don't know, that's, again, this is where, when we come.
We can't stop the process, it still has to happen regardless, it's just a matter of. It makes it a lot easier to set aside a little bit each year, so that the impact isn't significant in one tax year.
So we passed it before, so there must be a balance of 60 or 80,000?
I think I actually put that in.
So you'll be discussing during the budget process of how to come up with the, the rest of it?
Maybe they'll give us a break and mark it down for us.
Not during this workshop.
You won't get a coupon.
Yeah, the, the workshop that we're gonna have is, is just on our operating budget.
Okay, for this year.
You know, right. That subject will come up again, because it needs to come up in order to address the payment of what it's gonna cost to.
Yeah, John is probably on track, it's next year's discussion.
It's next year's budget, yeah.
Yeah. It's gonna be a way me though, 'cause you're probably gonna have to pay.
It'll be twice as much.
Yeah. And that'll be a Warren article to get turned down again?
It's still, I don't know.
And then what?
No, no, it'll probably have to be in the budget. It does.
It does, the information doesn't get out to the voters.
So, just for. Discussion purposes, the balance of that capital reserve fund. Just scanning through the Warren articles, 'cause I have it right here somewhere. Was $71,968.27 as of the close of the year, so residual interest.
30,000 short based on history. Thank you.
Thanks for the added, and.
Hello, Linda Prashani, 16 Camelot Court. One of the subjects you talked about today was the Fire Department bylaws. Are those new bylaws that were from whatever month this year, are they available online, so that they're visible to all taxpayers?
They will be.
Yes, as we just approved from tonight, I don't think.
Right, but will they be placed online?
And if you wanted a copy, if you came in, I'm sure Ellen would find you a copy, if you wanted a hard copy.
Okay, thank you. Also discussed tonight was the complaint policy, and so I just have a suggestion that you log all.
Hey, Gene, please, thank you, go on.
Sorry, um, just a suggestion, not a question, that you log all email complaints, you log all verbal complaints, you log all in-person complaints, 'cause I think that's what the concern is, you haven't had that in place before. Um, and that you do not accept any anonymous complaints, because they wouldn't be able to be placed on a log and have any real visibility as to what's going on.
Do you think we should categorize them too?
As to what department they apply to?
Sure.
Potentially so. I'm just used to working for a department that, for a company that had a lot of complaints.
Since you're bringing up the suggestion, I'm asking you for your input, because since you're, you're, we're here talking about it.
Sure.
Obviously, you have some thoughts on the process, since you're bringing it up in front of us, so I'd ask you to be more detailed if you, I mean, I get your idea, but, you know, maybe you wanna pass that along to us in a, in a form saying, hey, you know, if you are gonna have this process, you know, should we categorize it by department?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
I'll, so, I'll send it off to.
It's an assistance to the town that you're providing, so I'd like to say thank you ahead of time, if you do it.
You're welcome, I mean, I've got it in my mind, because I've had departments that did it, so I'll share it with Ellen. Um, and then we talked about the mats for the Parks and Recreation, so I know that they got three quotes. Which quote did we accept? The highest, the middle, the lowest? Like, is it usually the lowest that we go for, and?
No.
Okay.
It depends on various factors, so one quote was for $13,240, one was for $14,345, and one was for $13,801, so in this case, we did pick the lowest bidder.
Right. Okay, I would've had a follow-up question if you didn't, and ask why not, but no follow-up question. Um, and then Ellen mentioned a progressive discipline pro, policy. Is that applicable to employees?
Yes.
And stipend individuals, or just employees?
It's part of the Personnel Manual, so if you're questioning whether a.
Cause you, you told.
I, I guess it depends on the.
Like I'm a stipend employee and where?
Well, no, you're not a stipend employee, you're an elected official.
Okay, there you go.
There's very few stipend positions. There, there is the fire chief.
Right.
There is the emergency management director, there is the dog officer. Sorry?
Library chair.
Library trustees, they're.
That's his town's attorney assigned.
They're elected.
The trustee.
The library trustees are elected.
Director? Director.
It's an employee position.
Okay, so.
Let's find a list.
So should I send that as a question to you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Excuse me? So I was asking if the progressive disciplinary policy that they currently have in place is applying to just employees of the town, or also other stipend individuals who work within the town?
The current Personnel Policy states that it applies to employees that certain elected officials or municipal officers, I have to get the exact terminology.
I'll, I'll send that one to you.
Thank you.
Um, and then you talked about having that committee meeting on Wednesday as to the budget. So how is that gonna work? Is it the Board of Selectmen and the department heads all together? Or where does the Budget Committee come into play? Does the Board of Selectmen create the budget and the revised budget and the changes, and then send it over to the Budget Committee, and they say yes or no, or come up with something else?
We have an approved amount currently, which is the default budget, so the Budget Committee, and basically, we have the authority to spend that amount.
Okay.
The Budget Committee doesn't have to be involved.
So they don't play into this at all, okay.
Not unless we did, um.
Changing.
Right. We had to do a special meeting, potentially, they would have to be involved.
And that was part of like the way beginning, part of our meeting, we talked about that.
Okay. Um, so then my last is in just a statement, not a question. I find it quite sad that the Board of Selectmen are looking for a way to potential, a potential legal way to get around the vote of the employee, of the taxpayers of the town.
That's not true, because we didn't, we brought up.
We were just asking.
That you're talking about it, I'm just, I'm just really surprised that you're talking about.
Well, to do our due diligence, we should talk about everything and have every situation presented, so that we can do the right thing.
So we're not.
If we didn't talk about it, then we might be doing it injustice, because the thing only did fail by 27 votes, but as I expressed openly, I was against.
Right.
Us doing that.
Right.
So.
I just find it sad that it's being discussed, but you're saying that there's, it's due diligence on your part to do that, but I just find it sad.
We're mentioning it out loud, so some people were concerned, but the other thing is if we go through the default budget, and then we find that there is just a drastic deficit, it may not be saying, hey, we're gonna request a special meeting to hold a budget to get back everything that was requested the first time. It may, it may only be a small amount to make, to, you know, do we wanna maintain the police officer staffing we have? We don't wanna lose an officer, can we get this special meeting to get $40,000 extra? Like, we don't know what that is yet. It was stating out loud, that is a method that we have to use if we find that we're in dire straits based on where the default budget lays out. And then we were requesting, I kinda mentioned like the other additional things that we might have from Ellen, so it's like, alright, it might be a line-by-line thing, we might do a line-by-line swap, and that'll become key for the department heads that come in to be like, this is what we're set to do, and then we can find out what's spoken for, for the year, or what needs to happen, or, okay, if you don't get this, what, what does that mean for your department? It's just stating it out loud, we are not taking anything to do that, but.
Right.
That is a tool that could be used if we find we have a severe des, a deficit, excuse me, projected based on where we're at.
Okay.
And that is defined in that article, what law that is, so that's part of that article that was voted against.
That is, yeah, the second half of it.
Okay, so I guess to go along with that is that, I think it was in a Budget Committee meeting, potentially, that they talked about, and maybe also the Board of Selectmen did it too, was what are the critical departments? Like, what is the responsibility of the town to the taxpayers? And it was making sure the Fire Department, the Police Department, the roads, and potentially also the Election Committee? Like, those are critical to the running of a town, I would think, in my opinion. So, any department that is not one of those should be where I, as, if I was the manager of this organization, would look for first, like, not the groups that are mandatory that you take care of the town, but all those others, such as Park and Recreation, just a suggestion, so. Thank you very much.
All right, it's 9:20, thank you guys all, are you coming up, or you?
May I?
Well, yeah, I didn't, I was just asking, 'cause I was supposed to close it, but sure, sit down.
Hi, Sandra Vilchuk, 106 Mountain Road. Um, I'm gonna bring up a concern of mine, since you don't have any policies in place. I feel that this is the proper time and place to do so. About a week and a half ago, I attended a public meeting in a public place. Afterwards, I requested a tour, to which I was told there was no time for that. When I requested a tour by a member, that person was told that they were not allowed to tour me. And finally, the head of the department relinquished, and very, to, in my opinion, angrily agreed to tour me. I was told I was intimidating. There was no reason justified, but I was told several times that I was intimidating. When I self-toured, I was also questioned numerous times to why I was doing this. I was aware of what this place was, but why was I here? Well, my, my statement was, I'm a citizen of this town, I pay taxes in this town. It was a public building, it was a public meeting, I requested a tour. The tour was really allowed, I would say, and there were three faults that I found. I was basically told, well, that's the way it is now, and just, you know. And just, you know, that's how it was. I was actually, I'm not gonna say I was sworn at, but a swear word was used in my presence, to which there were witnesses. And the term intimidating, there should have been people within earshot to hear that, it was several times repeated. That is my concern, I was also told, and this was secondhand, that most likely tomorrow, the day after this meeting, that I would have reported this incident to either the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator. So there probably are people in this room, at least two of them, that was present at that said public meeting. So what is recommended, aside from stating my information right now, that I need to do? Shall I wait until you come up with a concrete policy on complaints?
I don't think that a complaint warrants a policy to be made. I would say that I think if you state what your complaint is, then it can be followed up.
That was it?
Thank you.
You don't care to know who this person is?
I would like to know the details, yes, I mean, you, you've spoke very broadly.
Okay, so that will be sent to whom in an email?
Please send it to me.
In an email?
Please.
Okay. And there was a Board of Selectmen member present, probably not within earshot, but perhaps had heard something, because that person was there. That person knows I was there. That person should know that I was not intimidating. So I am offended, highly offended and concerned, because it appears to be some sort of a retaliation that I am not allowed in a public place, for whatever reason. I've done nothing to make my presence intimidating. I will also include an email that was sent to me previously, maybe a month or so prior to that, regarding a training. I'm sorry, am I, are you?
No, I'm just, I'm just
Shall I hurry up?
A little intimidated by the, your tone of voice and how you're dictating to us, but you can go on. It's an opinion. I just want you to know, that's how the other people must have felt.
I've been intimidated by your condescending voice, quite frankly.
Sure, see, again, it's an opinion.
Most of the night, and that's my opinion.
Sure, we all have an opinion.
So as an elected official, I am intimidating you? Sir, as an elected official, as an elected official, I am intimidating you?
Well, anybody can be intimidated, doesn't matter who you are and what situation it is.
But you're an elected official.
That doesn't make me God, I'm just a person, just like everybody else. I was just using that as a judge, as a
Well, let me wholeheartedly apologize to you right here and now.
Sure.
I apologize that my voice and my concern is intimidating to an elected official.
Well, why couldn't it be intimidated to any other official?
So
Whether they're in the department?
You would like me to proceed with emailing you?
What the nature of your complaint is in as much detail as you possibly can, so I can look into it, please.
Okay, thank you.
At nine twenty-seven, I am gonna close this meeting of the Nottingham Board of Select, uh, today, Monday, March eighteenth. We have no, we have nothing for non-public, so good night in Nottingham, and thank you for all attending.